We are on. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, and it's 6:00. And this is the time for our regularly scheduled evening meeting. And it's good to see everybody here. We are very pleased that so many members of our community are here with us today. And we look forward to hearing from some of you. As you know, we have a full agenda tonight. It's going to be a long meeting, so we should probably get to it. My name is Patrice Horstman. I am the supervisor for District 1, and I am the chair of the Board of Supervisors. District 2. District 2.
Good evening, everyone. Hernando Vasquez, supervisor for District 2 and current vice chair. I'm attending the meeting tonight from Saravista here for the Rural Transportation Summit this week. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Supervisor Vasquez. District 3.
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Ontiveras, District 3.
District 4.
Yeah, hey, uh, for being here. Thank you so much for being here. Judy Begay, supervisor, District 4.
And District 5.
Good evening. I'm Lena Fowler, District 5 supervisor. I'm in San Diego participating in a NACO meeting here, the National Counties Association.
Supervisor Fowler sits on that NACO board. And so we're pleased that both Supervisor Vasquez and Fowler are with us here tonight and are also serving our county in different parts, one in the state and one out of state. So thank you for being here. Our next item of business is to honor our country through the Pledge of Allegiance. Those that can, please stand so we can honor our country. All right, we're moving along. Our next item of business is the Call to the Public. For those that are here today and for those that are online, the Call to the Public gives you, members of the public, an opportunity to address the governing board if you have questions, concerns, et cetera. Now would be the time. These are for items that are not on the agenda. You have three minutes to address the board. Since these items are not on the agenda, the Arizona Open Meeting Law requires that we cannot discuss them. However, we can certainly hear them from you, and we can refer them to staff and/or we can put them on a follow-up board meeting so that we can have a full discussion. And because this is a public meeting, we are asking for people to be civil and courteous and professional in their presentations to the public and to the board. With that, I'm going to turn this over to our clerk, Lindsay Daly, to have her explain how you can join us virtually, online, or here with us today for the Call to the Public. So Lindsay, please.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. At this time, the Call to the Public, if you would like to make a comment, we will provide three minutes on the clock for you to comment. We have comment cards that look like this by the door, and also Brian Harris has been helping with this. So he's got some in his hand. If you are here specifically for a specific item, we have two comments already for Item 10. So when we get to that item, we'll open up the public hearing, and you can comment at that time. If you're watching on the YouTube stream, you can email to boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov, and that will appear in our inbox if you have a comment as well. So we do have one comment card that doesn't look like it's specific for an item. Armando Berlusconi, if you want to come up, I will set the clock for three minutes. If you can just state your name for our minutes, then I will start the clock.
Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. Board. My name's Armando Berlusconi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I sent you all an email last week, and a lot has happened since. I've spent nearly three decades in leadership, growing my organization from two employees to 250. I've worked in workforce development long enough to know what effective leadership looks like and what it doesn't. Frankly, I believe the Board of Supervisors should be very worried. We're heading into rough and uncertain years. Every forecast points towards an economic slowdown. Inflation, stagnant wages, and a shrinking labor force are already hitting counties, rural counties first. The Workforce Development Board is one of the few tools we have to keep people working and retrain displaced employees. And yet, right now, Coconino County Workforce Development Board has no executive director, no board chair, and an expired board certification. This is a massive failure in leadership, and it lies squarely at the feet of the county. I believe that most problems can be solved with honest communication. Leadership in this county has failed to communicate, and the failure is costing us dearly. Three years ago, I had joined the Workforce Development Board when Billy Francis began as executive director. Back then, when the county was serving as a Title 1B provider, Coconino County ranked dead last in the state of Arizona on every measurable workforce metric. I'm going to say that again, dead last. It didn't work. We recognized that, and we started to fix it. We brought in new contractors, a Title 1B expert, to rebuild the system, and for that, we were undermined, dismissed, and punished by county leadership. I witnessed county staff treat the workforce team, specifically Billy, with disrespect. I saw dishonest and demeaning interactions that no professional should ever face. I believe the county acted this way because they lost the OIA funds and wanted control of it back. This wasn't about performance; it was about power and money. And while this was happening, county staff failed the board, ignoring emails, pulling agenda items without explanation, refusing to communicate with the very volunteers who were rebuilding the system. We gave our time freely. We brought our expertise, and we did it because we care about the county and the people who live here. To be treated like this isn't just unprofessional, it's disgraceful. Coconino County leadership has betrayed the trust of this board and jeopardized years of progress. We can't build a strong community on fear and silence. You build it on trust, respect, and transparency. Those are the three things that lack from this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other call to the public?
We do have three other comment cards from Thad Johnson, John Vale, and Miranda Balalsky, but I believe from the indication on the comment cards, they're here for a specific item, number 10. So once we get to that item, we'll open the public hearing up, and we've got your cards ready. There's anyone else that wants to speak during this Call to the Public? If you haven't filled out a comment card, that's okay. You can make your way up to the podium now, and we just ask that you state your name for our minutes, and we'll set the clock for three minutes. And again, if there's anyone on the virtual format watching the stream on YouTube, you can email a comment to boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov. And it looks like Chair Horstman, we do not have any comments in our inbox, and no more comment cards for Call to the Public.
All right, members of the public, this is your last chance. We'll give it a few more 30 seconds and see if anybody else would like to address the board under Call to the Public.
There are no other comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the public, and appreciate input. We are moving on to the consent agenda. And members of the public, consent agenda are items that are administrative or ministerial in nature. These items can be handled through one motion and one vote. These items are not individually discussed. And so with that, we have an opportunity for the board to remove items that we would like to individually discuss. The items that we remove for individual discussion then will be decided through their own individual motion and their own individual vote. So at this time, we have, let me see here, three. We have six items on the consent agenda. This is the smallest consent agenda we've had in a long time. Thank you. With that, is there, I'm going to ask my colleagues if there's an item they would like to separate. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to remove Items 3 and 4, please.
Thank you. 3 and 4 will be removed. And I know, Deputy County Manager, are there items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair and members, Deputy County Manager Peterson, I would recommend that Item 2A be tabled tonight and be dealt with when we deal with bylaw revisions to the workforce development.
Very good. I appreciate that. I would have removed them otherwise. I think it should be a discussion item for future. So members of the public, we are removing Items 3 and 4 for individual discussion and vote. So I would, at this time, entertain a consent, or entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, 1 through 6, removing Item 2A, which is tabled for a future date, and separating for individual discussion, Item 3 and 4. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Consent agenda has passed. So let's move to Item Number 3. Consideration and possible action to approve a funding agreement with the City of Page to provide a total of $1,500 from community initiative funds. District 1, $500; District 2, $500; District 5, $500, in support of the 22nd Annual Page Arizona Balloon Regatta 3D Event held in conjunction with the annual Page Chamber Street Fair. Funding will specifically support essential public resources, including portable restrooms and trash services, to ensure the health, safety, and accessibility of this four-day community event, which is free and open to the public and serves as one of the largest gatherings in northern Arizona. And the supervisor from this district, Supervisor Fowler, I'm going to turn this to you for your comments and discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to invite everyone out to the Page Balloon Regatta, which starts on November 1st. That'll be that weekend. There's the balloon, air, hot air balloon festival that will be taking place, sponsored by the City of Page. And then there's the street fair that will be sponsored by the Page Chamber of Commerce. So I'd like to just invite everyone out, and this is a very important event, being that we've had our, we've had the two fires on the North Rim. Businesses, as a result, are really struggling because the North Rim, being that it's public lands, really has an economic, is the economic driver in the region. So these kinds of events are very important to boost the economy in the region, which is the Marble Canyon, the North Rim, Ferdonia, City of Page, and that whole region. So if you all could come out and support the businesses in the region that employs local, local, local people and to sustain their families and have, and just really be able to put food on the table. So I just want to thank you all for supporting this event and supporting the community initiative funds and the contributing from all the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Would you like to make a motion to approve the funding agreement with the City of Page?
I'm, I do so move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. So great, it's going to be a great event. I hope people can attend. So Number 4 is similar. Number 4 is consideration and possible action to approve a funding agreement with the Page Chamber of Commerce to provide a total of 1,000 from community initiative funds. District 2, $500; District 5, $500, in support of the Page Chamber Street Fair, a three-day event held in conjunction with the annual balloon regatta. Funding will specifically support live music performance and enhance the cultural and economic vitality of the event, which is free and open to the public and serves, again, as one of the largest community gatherings in northern Arizona. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you. And it so holds true, this is one event, and I know Coconino County is going to have an informational booth and to inform the public about all the wonder, all the great services that we provide for the public. So thank you so much. Thank you for supporting.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the information. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Item Number 4. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Vasquez. All those in favor of approving Item Number 4 is more fully set forth in the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we're moving on. We have some more consent agenda items that are very similar in nature as what we've just looked at, but these are for different special districts here that we have in Coconino County. This is a health district, and we need to now resolve as the Health District Board of Directors. So do I have a motion for us to resolve as the Health District Board?
So move.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Vasquez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are now the Health District Board of Directors. Even though we look the same, we are wearing different hats. We have another consent agenda item. This is consideration and possible action to approve the intergovernmental agreement, Amendment Number 3, between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Coconino County Health and Human Services, acting as the Health District for a period of September 1, 2025 through August 31, 2026, for $86,636 to support the CCHHS opioid overdose prevention program and funding a .5 FTE in Flag, .25 FTE in Page, and corresponding budget adjustments of $22,108.19 for the Health District. Do I have anyone wanting to remove this item from the consent agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept this consent agenda item.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve Public Health District Consent Agenda Item Number 7. Directors, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. This is passed. We are moving on. Members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of resolving back as the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye.
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 Are now the Board of Supervisors, but not for long, because we need to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors to consider a Jail District Consent Agenda item. Do I have a motion for us to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors?
So move.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of resolving as the Jail District Board of Directors signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. We are now the Jail District Board of Directors. We have another consent agenda item. Consideration and possible action to approve contract, and it's set forth, the number on the agenda, with Axon Enterprise Inc. using Sourcewell Contract. Again, the number is set forth in the agenda for a term of November 1, 2025, through June 30, 2030, and 2, to approve a denim aid to the contract, and 3, associated budget adjustments in the amount of $64,863.20 to provide body worn camera licenses and TASER certifications, unlimited storage in the cloud based evidence.com for deputies and detention officers, in the amount of $190,297.20 in fiscal year 2026, with a reoccurring amount of $212,384.00 for a period of four years. Does anybody want to remove this from the consent agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Supervisor Fowler.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We have approved consent agenda item. Members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of agreeing to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, it is unanimous. We are now the Board of Supervisors. We have some discussion items. We have a new item that was added recently. This is Item 8A, and I believe members of the board have received updated information on this. This is a presentation by and a discussion with Treasurer Sarah Benatar, who I see is with us this evening regarding the treasurer's candidacy for the office of Second Vice President of the National Association of Counties. And I'm going to turn this over first to the county manager, and then we'll turn this over to Sarah.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, as we know, National Association of Counties is so important for our involvement. We currently are in the federal government shutdown at the federal level, and our Association of Counties is very active in that network. The work that we do in Coconino County, we're always proud to say that we punch above our weight, so to speak, and our county agenda matters at the federal level, and we show that in everything that we do when we meet with our congressional representatives, our senate representatives, and our county, more broadly, representation. So with that, I'd like to turn to Treasurer Sarah Benatar regarding her candidacy for the office of Second Vice President of the National Association of Counties.
Good evening, Sarah. Treasurer Benatar, it's great to see you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chair Horstman, members of the board. Thank you, county manager. It is an honor to be here and joining you and sharing with you that I have filed to run as Second Vice President of the National Association of Counties, NACO. We are very excited to have done so. It is a historic announcement and run. We would be the first treasurer in the history, the 90-year history of NACO to hold that position, and also the first Latina. And we felt right now is kind of the best time to do so. As was mentioned and as you have heard the last several months, it's right now a very difficult time fiscally across the board, not just for counties, but for those that we serve. And having a strong voice in this role, a strong fiscal voice, we felt was really important to be able to do so and to bridge that gap and to use some of the resources that we have and the connections we've made, honestly, at a national level. And after being approached by several colleagues across the country, we decided that this was the right time to do so and to step up into that role. So our focus on this campaign really is about local control, restoring that local power to counties, and advocating for that at the federal level in this role, and lifting up that voice, especially for us here in Coconino County. There are many counties similar to us facing the same struggles that we are, with our constituents facing those same struggles. And so that's really going to be our big focus, is pushing that fiscal bridge and talking about why the money matters and how being strong fiscally makes us a better county and makes us all better counties. And I would love to have the support of our board and our county as we move forward with this process. The vote will be next July, of course, but it's a, it's multi, there's a lot of campaigning involved in this, and so I would be honored to have that support as we go through this process, and would love to answer any questions you may have on this.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Benatar. And, you know, quite frankly, I can't think of a better person to run for this position, especially during these times. Quite frankly, we need women and women of color at the top leadership positions in NACO. And with your strong fiscal background, you've been a leader in the state, you've been a leader nationally, and we're very lucky here in Coconino County, we have you taking care of our money. And I know myself, as a board member, can sleep well at night knowing that you're taking care of that. So, and it is, you know, we've, many of us have been members of NACO now for quite a while. Supervisor Fowler, much longer. And we know the work that goes into a candidacy, and then, quite frankly, the work that goes into the office itself. But it really, really creates visibility, it creates input, it opens doors for us here in Coconino County to have people in leadership within NACO. And Coconino County has always punched above its weight in NACO and many of the boards and the commissions, and so I just think this is a natural. And I know this isn't an action item, but I will tell you personally, you have my very strong support for this position.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Supervisor Ontiveras.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm just going to add on to her comments, and I know that I've shared this with you privately, as I very much appreciate your, I am a fiscal conservative, and I know that you are too, and I really appreciate your approach to this. So I think that you are going to be an excellent candidate, and I want you to know that you also have my support.
Thank you so much.
And Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share my strong support for Treasurer Benatar taking on this role. We had the opportunity to serve together on the North Country Board for several years, and then we've served as colleagues, as elected, over the last four years. Having, being a member of NACO, which is the National Hispanic Association for Counties that Sarah is chair of, and watching her leadership skills, it really, it really makes me proud to think that she has the capacity to do this. And she's well-known, she's well-respected and well-connected nationwide, and she's an expert in her field. And then she's half-Quatermone as well, so fellow Chapina. So, you know, just really, really happy and pleased that she's taken this step and look forward to supporting her moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments from members of the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Sarah. So happy that you finally are making this announcement. I'm so happy and proud of you, and of course, you have my support. We've talked about this. You know, in the 90 years of NACO, this is their, this is the year that we're going to be celebrating NACO birthday and also the counties as well. And I think it's really a great time for you to run. We serve on the NACO Board of Directors. You sit on the Audit Committee for NACO. And also, you know, NACO is, has over 3,600 counties, of which over 2,000 are rural counties. And it's so important to make sure that we have our voice there as rural counties. The next, the next vice chairs that are going to be presidents that are coming in are from large counties. So it is very important that we have the rural county voice that is there and that will be able to really speak for all of us and will be able to support you in any way that we can. I'm very happy that you are running and just so proud of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Begay.
Thank you, Sarah. I knew you would make it to the top one of these days. But I just want to say thank you. You do a good job here for us at the county, and I trust that, you know, you'll do the same at that level, and I really support you, and I know that, you know, you're very transparent, and you share a lot of things with us that, you know, if anything's coming up, you're there to inform us. And so I just want to say thank you, and I really, I support you.
Thank you.
All right. I think you've heard from us. Anything else you'd like to say, Sarah?
I just want to say it's an honor to serve as the county I just want to say it's an honor to serve as the county treasurer, and I feel very honored and humbled to have all your support and to really put myself out there. It is not always the most comfortable thing in the world to do. But, you know, it is a difficult time, and so being able to help leverage the fiscal knowledge, experience, and the relationships that we've, or I've created through the, I say we, because it's we as a county, through the years, it would be such an honor to do so. So again, really appreciate your support, and we will continue to do the hard work here and hopefully continue to do that nationally as well.
Very good. And you've heard from all of us, we're supporting, you let us know how we can help. We've all seen these campaigns at these national associations, and they're intense. And so we're all here to help you, be part of it.
Thank you.
All right, members of the board, we have another item that was somewhat last minute because there are ever, ever-growing changers, changes happening in the federal government, and our concerns unfortunately about some of these cuts and how they will affect our community members and the services for some of our most vulnerable members of our community are certainly being taxed. And we have a new item on here, item eight B. And members of the board, you should have received the information before yesterday. And item eight B is Emergency Consideration of Possible Action to Approve a Budget Adjustment from the Coconino County Stability Fund to the Arizona Department of Health Services Women Infant and Children, also known as WIC, program for local county financial coverage of the Women Infant and Children Program in a specific amount to be determined by the Board of Supervisors to address the emergency shortfall of federal funding during the federal government shutdown. The Board will consider whether to approve the budget adjustment for infants only and/or non-infants, in other words, women and children. And the Board will consider the duration of the Stability Fund support of WIC programming in Coconino County. And I know we have our HHS Director with us, and before we hear from her, I don't know if County Manager has some introductory remarks.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you for allowing us to add this as an emergency addition. Also, we thank the County Attorney's Office for helping prepare this appropriately. Actually, there are three items, items eight B, eight C, and eight D, and three different actions. And as you had explained, eight B is for the use of the Coconino County Stability Fund to the Arizona Department of Health Services Women Infant and Children Program. Eight C is a use of a budget adjustment from the Stability Fund to Coconino County Health and Human Services District for Wages and Benefits to Health and Human Services Personnel. And then eight D, if we would choose to move forward as an emergency consideration and possible action to improve an agreement between Coconino County, a political subdivision of the state of Arizona, and the Arizona Department of Health Services WIC program to provide Coconino County Stability Funding to ADHS for the purpose of maintaining the continuity of service and WIC benefits. Director Axelin did present to our elected official leadership team this morning and is prepared to make this presentation to you as well this evening. Also on standby, and thank Erica Philpotter, Deputy County Manager, for helping coordinate this effort as well to get this on the agenda. And also on standby is our Chief Fiscal Officer, Sari Malaney, to discuss any financial obligations and implications, as the board might have questions on that for both the duration and the cost of those services from the Stability Fund.
Since these items are very interconnected and related, I think we'll hear them, hear from Michelle on these. I'm assuming you're going to touch it all here. And afterwards, we will take the motions individually.
Thank you. Give me one second. We've got to. Got to hit the next.
Got to love technology until it doesn't work.
It's working all right. I just need to, I need to zoom in a little bit so it shows up a little bigger. There we go. Thank you for your tolerance. Chair Horseman and Board of Supervisors, thank you for hearing us today. And we have a plea to you today from our community, from our staff at HHS, and from the state. So what do we know? What is Women Infant and Children Program? This is a program that has existed nationwide, starting in nineteen seventy-two. It went through a pilot, and in nineteen seventy-four, it became a staple throughout the United States. This is a program funded under the USDA, so a federal pass-through. So it is at the mercy of the federal budget currently. And this program has existed for over fifty years, and in Coconino, fifty years. So, WIC. It currently serves one hundred and forty-five thousand families statewide in Arizona. WIC participants spend twelve point five million dollars in our grocery stores statewide every month. That's a lot of money going back into our communities and to our economy. This is four hundred and sixteen thousand through five hundred and twenty-six local grocery stores every day. The WIC serves pregnant parents to children age four for services that are part of a nutritional package. So this isn't just any kind of food you want to buy from a grocery store. These are very specific USDA packages, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. So what is Coconino County? Does the WIC program look like? We currently have just less than nineteen hundred families enrolled in this program. We have staff that are employed locally in this program. And the state let us know that the funding will run out at the end of this month. So tomorrow, the state of Arizona will be doing a press conference, asking and alerting the other community members that they're out of funds in the WIC program for food as of October thirty-first. They have enough funds to cover staff through November fifteenth. So the ask to the counties was, would you consider helping? Some of the counties are considering helping, but it does come with a price tag. The way this WIC system is set up is that we receive a contract from the Arizona Department of Health Services to pay for wages. Ninety-two percent of our contract is tied up in wages, and we'll go over who those, who those staff are. The rest of the money is kept by the state and issued via what we call WIC e-cards. Those e-cards go out and are filled automatically. So the state is asking if the boards and counties are willing to consider helping pay for this food cost, our contract would go from us to the state with a wire transfer of funds to help cover that. And we'll talk about which of the counties are considering, and what does that look like as well.
So basically, because it's a pass-through fund, these are federal dollars that are no longer being passed to the state to then be passed through to the counties for their WIC program. So the state no longer has the money because the program, the federal program, the federal funds are not coming to the state. Is that correct?
Hundred percent correct. So what has the state done to kind of, you know, what has done to shrink their budget? They have sharpened their belt here, and they have laid off some staff in theirs. They have cashed in all the rebates they have on food that is available, including formula pieces. And they took out a credit line, trying to get us through. So the state really has stepped up and tried to make us through. So they are the ones who got us through October. Where they can go forward is November, December, until a budget passes at the federal level. So what we're looking at currently is, you have some choices. If you considered helping to fund the food cost, there, the groupings are, you can help cover for infants only. So that is what we're looking at on the board right now. That cost is about sixty-two thousand dollars per month. And I'll let you know what kind of makes up that package. So if you're an infant, you can see that in the middle, we have two hundred and forty-nine of them. That food package per infant per month is two hundred and three dollars. Doesn't seem like a lot, but when you start to multiply that, that's where it gets going a little higher. So in an infant-formula-fed USDA package, that includes infant cereal at eight ounces, sixty-four ounces of fruit and vegetables, and eight cans of Similac Advance. Very specific. These are very specific plans. So can't go buy the candy bar, can't buy the popcorn or the soda. These are strict formula guidelines that we have to follow. So that's what WIC is. It's a nutrition program. So if the board was to consider funding infants only, that cost is just shy of sixty-two thousand dollars, and it would help feed three hundred and ninety-two infants. Now, if the board would like to consider, what about everybody else in the WIC program? That's what we call our non-infants. So those are pregnant, postpartum women, and also children ages one through the age of four. And you can see that breakdown on your sheets there. And those also have packages. If the board was to consider both infants and non-infants, that cost, that grouping of people would be one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three children they would be feeding. The cost to feed non-infants per month is just shy of a hundred and two thousand per month. So you can feed infants, which is the highest priority out there in the food nutrition standard of categories. You can choose to potentially fund food for non-infants, or you could do both. So the ask tonight is a decision point of emergency considerations. The state has the contracts all set up with the grocery stores. They're asking if counties would consider contracting with the state, basically wiring money to them to cover a full month. However, that needs to look for you, to help cover those. So do you want to feed infants? Do you want to feed non-infants? Do you want to do both? Also, the length of coverage, starting November first, all those cards are turned off. Even if a parent thought they were eligible, all those cards are turned off. So what are other counties and jurisdictions doing? Maricopa is looking at infant only for November only. Their cost is three million dollars alone for that piece, so just kind of giving you a feel for what we're looking at. Pima, Penal, and Yuma are all talking to their boards tonight and tomorrow, and they are all looking at infant only November. Hila is considering both. They feel that that is important in a smaller rural community, and the resources are less. So if the board was to consider helping, what does that cost look like? Also, the cost of the staff. We're asking also, as one of our board elements tonight, to potentially consider hanging on to our staff, which the funding will end November fifteenth, to carry them through January second. They will continue to work with families, working with resources, helping them to get on access if they have medical necessities, and really help them transition and work through this period of time of our federal shutdown. Our staff are mighty. We have one caseworker who handles Page and Fredonia, located in our Page office. We have one intake specialist, one caseworker who covers Flagstaff and Williams, one dietitian, one supervisor, superhero slash dietitian, she does both, and two breastfeeding coaches that are neither full-time. So like we talked about, our budget from the state annually is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Ninety-two percent is spent on wages. So we really put everything back into the program. It really is a no-fluff program. So our ask to the board was to help cover them from mid-November to the end of January, with also looking at helping cover our infants, nineteen hundred children. It also affects our grocery stores because that money stays local. The state can turn on and off those cards based on what the county's desires are. So cost, what we're looking at. If the board was to consider covering potentially the cost of November and December for infants only, that cost is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If the board would consider covering the cost of non-infants, I got those backwards, lucky me. Okay, infant-only food is sixty-one, sixty-two thousand dollars. Cost for November and December is a hundred and twenty-three thousand. If you were to consider infants in all other categories, basically feeding nineteen hundred children, the cost would be for two months, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We can do it by month, we can do it in either group.
And then what's the additional cost for the staff?
About fifty-six thousand dollars. It would be approximately three payrolls with a cash out. So we're asking the board to consider possibly covering the staff to January second from mid-November, covering two months with covering nineteen hundred children. It's a large ask, not to exceed five hundred thousand.
Supervisor Antiveras.
Thank you for this presentation. So I've got a question. So the, I know what the ask is. Now, let's say tomorrow morning, highly unlikely, and I know this, that a deal is reached and the government opens back up. This would no longer be necessary, correct?
Hundred percent.
Okay. Is there going to be any repayment when the government, eventually, they have to reopen? Is there going to be reimbursement for these funds if Coconino County did decide to do this? If I'm right, it's about, okay, so no more than five hundred K. Okay. Would that come back to the county?
Potentially. It depends if the USDA funds the hundred percent that was due to the state. If the USDA gets funded short because of the budget cut-down, in the contract that the state is requesting from the counties, it is not a guarantee of repayment.
Okay, thank you.
So I know that you have some of that staff to help get some of these folks on access. Will access, if they're on access, cover some of these infant formulas and cost of the baby food, et cetera?
Only medically necessary, so they would have to have a medical issue to be covered. So a small group, not a full group.
Any other questions?
You know, I do have one. I know that you mentioned, I believe, Maricopa, was it Pima or Penal, have decided to fund just the infant only. Did they lay out their rationale for that decision that you could share with the board tonight?
Yes. We were on a conference call earlier today, sharing rationale for each of the requests. They do not have the contingency funds to be able to fund beyond a month and beyond the infants at this time. They were not as, had the foresight that our board did.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Yes. So these, the families that we are talking about, the infants and the families, they, these are families throughout the Coconino County that are going to be assisted, that will be receiving assistance because they already are under the WIC program.
That is correct.
Well, what if someone decides to apply, that would they be able to get assistance as well, either with the infant board or the children or the women?
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. To answer that question, the answer is yes and no. What we're asking the board to consider in the contract is to accept all newborns that come in. We are expecting twenty-five newborns to be born in November, and we have twenty-eight one-year-olds that are aging toward that next step. So assuming our numbers stay static, what we're asking the board also is not to accept any new transfers. The new transfers would be someone from Yavapai asking to be transferred and taken under our WIC program here in Coconino County. What we'd like to do is save our county dollars for our county community in that capacity. So yes, accept newborns coming into the system, but, and that should stay neutral with the numbers according to the state, but not accept transfers. All other counties are also looking at the same thing of not accepting transfers, just while the counties are supporting the bill.
Thank you. Just another follow-up, Madam Chair. Thank you. Just another follow-up, Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Well, this set a precedent. You know, there's been discussion about the, there's a proposal out there that's going to be transferring federal, certain federal programs, or a portion of those programs to the state. And then where, you know, the state always does the, well, what they sometimes do, I can't say always, sometimes do is just transfer to the county and just make a mandate.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Supervisor Fowler.
Yes.
Deputy County Manager Peterson responding on sort of a government affairs and history perspective, Supervisor Fowler. I don't believe this is precedential in terms of an ongoing mandate, as you have talked about. Certainly, the state could ask again, and there could be a precedent understanding by some of our, the community that receives the dollars and the help. But it would take a statutory change at the legislature to to shift that, the program, down to the counties and require us to fund it and such, which could come. I don't, but it's not directly related to our action. Just simply, I think we're really making a judgment call about how long we would want to take on another level of government's responsibility. And and I think that your your action here, we would understand is non precedential, right? That we would continue to advocate against a shift of the state mandate to the local level.
And I know Supervisor Vasquez has his hand up, but I'd like to just also respond to Supervisor Fowler's comment and make a similar comment. You know, when we set aside our stability fund, it was because of concerns on some movement in the federal government with regards to some of the cuts that were being made, especially hitting Health and Human Services, and quite frankly, some of our most vulnerable members. And our concern that we wanted to make sure that we were able to, to the extent that we, as a little county government, with the lowest property taxes in the state, primary property taxes in the state, that we could basically cover. And so, unlike, it sounds like Maricopa and some of the others, we did set aside a contingency fund. But here's where the danger comes in. And the danger is that we are a county, and we are very limited on the funds that we have. We're limited because of our community. We have less than 150,000 members. We get property taxes. We get our monies from state and a local sales tax. And we are also experienced, as Supervisor Fowler indicated, and I experienced in my own district with Grand Canyon, that because of the fires and other matters, inflation, et cetera, that if we do not have the tourism and outdoor recreation that we've enjoyed in the past, it means that our revenue goes down. That's why, of course, we put aside this stability fund to help in these extremely uncertain times. But I think what we do here tonight, and I think we all feel a very great need to help our most vulnerable members, but we also need to make it very clear to the state, we're a county and we're limited. And the state's been limited. Thank you for doing it in October, State of Arizona. We appreciate the governor and her staff for finding the money. And but this is something that we cannot take on the federal responsibility and the federal programs. So, you know, I think that we've got money set aside for this, but I share Supervisor Fowler's concerns that we can only do so much. And and there will be a limit to what we can do. So and Supervisor Vasquez, please.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, thank you, Director Axlin, for bringing this to us. This is definitely looking out for the the most vulnerable in our community. 1,900 children are a lot of children and and folks and and families that are impacted by that. Not not to mention the economic impact of those dollars going through the those grocery stores. And the thing that that I'm struggling with and really thinking about is, you know, the amount that we could, that we have the ability because of the stability fund to allocate to this, to cover this amount, this 370 or 380 something thousand dollars to cover this, you know, it only covers November and and December. What happens in January? Because we can't keep doing this. I did the math, like in those two months, if you multiply that six for a whole year, that's 2.2 million dollars. And that is not sustainable for for the county to be able to take on this responsibility and continue to do so. And so while it's great that we have this stability fund, we also don't want to nickel and dime it. And so, you know, I just just concerned and and still digesting, what does it mean in January or February for those families? And how are there other ways of of providing community support? Because I've had constituents reach out that are worried about WIC and and want to donate formula, want, and they don't know how they can help or support. And so I guess my question is, besides what happens in January, i- is, you know, can community members donate to a central place for this kind of food? And maybe this, you know, maybe this is thinking forward beyond January. Maybe this is something that's in a conversation. But can people choose to donate formulas, say? And if so, can they do so to the county? Or is there a nonprofit that they should be? Like what, how can the count, how can county residents support these families? Because they're really worried, and they want to pitch in, they just don't know how. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Vasquez. To answer some of your questions, I agree with you 100%. I think we can. One of HHS's strengths are in our nonprofit partnerships. I do believe there's a great opportunity for us to partner with our food banks, and also with our staff to be able to get individuals who could be falling off WIC, come whatever date that may be. I believe also that a lot of the counties are have the same questions. It is a burden to the county. What else could fall? What else do we need to save our funds for? And that is why they're opting for the one month, wait and see, and then they'll address it again the following month. That would be half the ask that we are asking right now, to cover basically one month, feed both groups of children, and cover staff through that November date.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I just want to extend that. For me, I prefer to go ahead and approve the amount that's requested up to. So that way, we don't have to come back and have this conversation again in a month. But we know we have until the two, to the new year covered. That's just my preference. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Vasquez. And and I have to say, I would agree with you. Up to a 500,000, that'll take care of the infants and the the remainder that are covered under the WIC program. And for two months, so there is no interruption. I mean, these are some of the most vulnerable of our community members. And this is exactly why we set aside that money. And it's limited, but that would be my preference as well. And then, quite frankly, we'll bring it back. In the meantime, you need to work for these nonprofits and and see what we can do. And I know during COVID, that's exactly what was done. The county really spearheaded, organized all of the nonprofits to work together to handle the concerns and handle the needs. So we may be needing to do that again, it sounds. Supervisor Begay.
Thank you, Michelle, for making a presentation. I'm kind of, I'm thinking about the two-month deal for for now. And I think we have to really take this seriously, and I know we we all do. And I just want to say that it I am concerned, January on, and hopefully doesn't go that far. But I think, you know, we have a responsibility, you know, for with the WIC program. I think alongside of this, we need to inform the WIC people that are the recipients that we don't know what's going, we don't know how it's going to be looking like, and they need to be informed, and they need to be asked to, you know, maybe get some help, and then also, of course, donations that we're talking about. And then on on top of that, the staff that are working there, too. You know, we need to let them know now. We don't know what what it's going to be like in January. So but hopefully, things iron out before then, and that, you know, we're all back on the road again. So that's what I'm thinking about right now. And certainly, you know, this, we can't be continuing to use these dollars. You know, there's usually other things that we need to use those dollars for. But I just want to say thank you so much for bringing this to the board. And I agree with all my colleagues as to the comments that they made. And I'm sitting here thinking, first of all, was just the $300,000. And I thought that I I'm thinking that was including the the staff and the infants only. But then, you know, there's others that are, they're needing our help, too, and we we can't just sit back. But again, we can do so much as a board, too. So just want to say thank you so much for bringing this. And then we'll see what things are like, you know. But anybody needs to know upfront that, you know, we don't know what it's going to be like in January. That way, you know, they're they're getting prepared for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Begay.
Supervisor Antiveras.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments that I've heard from my fellow supervisors this evening. And if we do a flashback to when we were working on the budget, I knew, I knew at some point what we're dealing with was going to happen. And it's happened. It's happened with this case, with an ask coming before. And that was the exact reason that we set aside that stability fund. So this is not fluff. I just want to be sure. Like, everyone knows how fiscally conservative I am. This is not fluff. As you said, there no candy bars are going to be bought with this. So we have no crystal ball. It is a specific ask up to 500,000 going to January 2nd. We do not know what's going to happen. But I am in favor of funding the amount that you asked for both of them. And that's why I asked for the rationale, why the other counties were not. We were forward-thinking. And this is the exact thing that we wanted to prevent from happening. And I also just want to see, I believe Chair Horseman touched on this, that Coconino County kind of got, we've been double, triple whammied with the fires, with the lack of tourism, decrease, yeah, the floods. I mean, we have had a lot that has happened, that has caused a lot of economic instability. And I don't think this is where we need to add to to any further instability. So I am also in favor of approving up to 500K through January 2nd to cover both sets of of children, the infants and the children.
Thank you. We're very grateful.
Supervisor Fowler, any comments you want to make?
Yes, thank you. It is so sad what we are going through. It is the people that are in need the most that are being attacked in the rural communities where it impacts them the most. These are children that we're talking about. And with the, our economy, the way it is, we've had major disruption in our economy. The businesses are struggling, who employ our our families. We are a seasonal employment county because we have public lands that we we depend on, we depend on tourism. Many, this is a time, many of them are laid off. And so it is very difficult time. And I'm very supportive of this. And this is the reason why that we put this stability funds aside. And I'm just really, is just really disheartening that the federal administration, their actions against our our residents and our people throughout the country in this way. It's just very, very sad. So with that, Madam Chair, I do support this request.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to to reiterate, I'm not sure if I said it earlier, but Supervisor Begay kind of sparked in me was the thought of, you know, besides these childrens and these families, we have seven staff from HHS that are losing their funding. And so this is really important that we have this program available and help give them support in potential transition. Hopefully, we get the funding and WIC doesn't have to get built from the ground up again. But it's a possibility. And so this is really important that we're supporting our staff because they're doing such important work with our most vulnerable. And so we need to make sure that they're taken care of as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Begay, do you have some final remarks?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The other thing is, one of my colleagues had brought up the possible reimbursement. And so we just wanted to have you kind of keep an eye on that. And then somebody else might want to use the stability fund later on for times like this. So and then I'm pretty sure, I'm just hoping that this this whole thing will come to an end where, you know, the funds are going to be released to us, you know, within the month. And, you know, it's, it could, that could happen, too. So but I just want to say, keep on trucking, you know. Thank you so much for, you know, bringing this to the board.
Members, members of the board, at this time, I would entertain a motion for A to B, and I have already read it, and it's more fully set forth in the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Someone?
Begay.
Hold on, everybody online. We are legal counsel.
Sorry. I think we we have the three motions, but I do think we need to fill in the dollar amounts and the terms. I think they were optional, like kind of fill in the blanks. I have some prepared, but Bill might have some prepared, too. I don't know. I have, I have some prepared if I need to go.
I would love to, can we hear from our deputy county attorney, Bill Ring? And we would love to have, I think you've heard the consensus on the board in our comments. And if you have a recommended motion, we'd love to hear it.
Madam Chair, members of the supervisors, I do. Your team has been working very quickly to put this, these agenda items before you. And so I happen to be the architect of the way the the agenda is noticed. And the reason it's noticed that way is is a tilt towards fiscal conservatism, which means that in each of these particular actions, B, C, and D, there's choices that you have the ability to make. In the first motion, for coverage of the Women, Infant, and Children Program, you have the ability to choose infants only and or non infants. That's how it's noticed, meaning the the mothers and women who are not the infants, subject infants. And the duration that you want to make this particular contribution. And our director of HHS, Michelle Axlin, has provided specific numbers for the cost of the infants and the cost of the non infants. And they are, just to repeat, they are infants only, $61,831.64 per month. The women and infants is $101,557.58 per month. And if I could ask the director a question, Michelle, are these numbers additive so that each month, the cost would be the sum of those two numbers, $162,000 per month? So what I'm suggesting to you in regard to the first motion is that you be specific about the funding amount. The idea of not to exceed 500 feels a little loose. I think that being specific about the dollar amount would really hit the target.
So with that, I would, at this point, just make a recommendation that somebody may want to consider in making a motion, that we cover the infants in the amount of $61,831.64 per month for November and December. And then also, the non infants in, for the same amount of time for the month of November and December. And we cover the staff for a period from November 15th to January 2nd in the amount of $56,000, the total amount for these two months, not to exceed 500,000. That would be something that.
And Madam Chair, if I can, that that's collapsing items B and C. So we were taking.
That's fine.
Yeah, we were taking staff separate.
That's fine.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think, sorry to.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think, sorry to interrupt you, Deputy Attorney Ring. What I would recommend is that not to exceed for item 8B, 400,000. If you add those numbers together, the total would be a bit under that for that two-month period. But if we said 500,000 for 8B, the recommendation would be 400,000. And then for 8C, the recommendation would be 100,000.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and, and I'm sorry, I mixed them up because we were doing it. So, so members of the board, 8B will just be the program for WIC and for the infants and non-infants for the two months, November and December, if that is a motion that someone wants to make.
You know, I'm confused.
I'm medicated.
Well, I was hopeful actually that maybe legal counsel would give us the language to use, given the fact, I think you got a consensus from the board.
My co-counsel has drafted a proposed motion.
And correct me if you think I've misstated things, okay? I would suggest the motion would be for item 8B, move to approve a budget adjustment of not to exceed $400,000 from the Coconino County Stability Fund for the purpose of providing ADHS with funding exclusively for the purpose of maintaining the continuity of service in WIC benefits to Coconino County infants and non-infants due to the emergency shortfall of federal funding during the federal government shutdown.
For the months of...
For the months of November and December.
Thank you.
We have a recommended motion, do I have a motion from the board?
I, I will make a motion as stated by legal counsel Angela Lane.
We have a motion in a second for a motion that has been provided by legal counsel. Before I call for the final motion or the final vote, Supervisor Vasquez, did you have a final comment?
No, I was going to second, I'm good, thank you.
Good, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you, Michelle. And please get the information out to our community members that we intend to continue to cover for November and December. And we will take it, you know, step by step on how we proceed from there. Deputy County Manager Peterson.
I just wanted to highlight, you do need action on 8C as well for the staff.
I know that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to do one at a time. I already mixed it up once, so let's do it one at a time. All right, members of the board, we have passed 8B. 8C is for emergency consideration and possible action to approve a budget adjustment from Coconino County Stability Fund to the Coconino County Health and Human Services District for wages and benefits for HHS personnel, seven total, assigned to Women Infant and Children's Program, in other words, WIC, in the payroll amount of $18,666.90 every two weeks from November 15th, 2025 through January 2nd, 2026, for local implementation of the county WIC program. The board will consider this action as a means to address the emergency shortfall of federal funds due to the federal government shutdown of essential services. So it looks to me that we have it with specificity in item 8C, but I'm going to ask legal counsel if there's anything else we need to consider in this motion other than what's set forth in the agenda.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm going to look towards co-counsel. However, in my opinion, the agenda item is itemized in such a way as it is its own motion.
Very good, any?
I just heard from our finance director, and she would like me to read a different motion because there was something, sorry, I can't remember quite what it was. I didn't hear what Bill said, I apologize because I was...
That's okay, and I don't know if we need to hear from Siri, who manages our books.
My apologies.
Thank you Chair, members of the board, just a point of clarification, a revised motion will include a not to exceed amount only because the current per pay period cost is listed here, but payroll costs can vary from pay period to pay period due to qualified life events and other things that change the employer costs. Therefore, we'll have an amended motion that covers it all.
Very good, good point. And with that, I'm going to turn to Angela Lane, our Deputy County Attorney, to get a revised recommended motion to cover what we're trying to do here.
Okay, the revised recommended motion for 8C is move to approve a budget adjustment of not to exceed $100,000 from the Coconino County Stability Fund to fund the wages and benefits of HSS staff assigned to the WIC program for a period of November 15th, 2025 through January 2nd, 2026.
Thank you for that revised motion. Do I have a motion from members of our board Supervisor Baguette? So moved? We have a motion by Supervisor Baguette, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Antiveras and a third by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous and it passes. We have, I believe, our last item, and this is 8D, and I'll read it. Emergency consideration and possible action to approve an agreement between Coconino County, Political Subdivision of the State of Arizona, and the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, WIC program to provide Coconino County Stability Fund, ADHS, that's the state, exclusively for the purpose of maintaining the continuity of services in WIC benefits to needy and eligible county WIC recipients due to the emergency shortfall of federal funding during the federal government shutdown. And I understand that this is exclusive of any transfers to the program. Is that correct? Members of the board, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Vasquez. All those in favor of the motion as read excluding transfers to the program, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just on that last item, so you understand, we have a draft of an agreement with ADHS to accept and receive the funds that you've just authorized. My task is to conform that draft to a final agreement. And the action, as I understand it, will authorize the Chair of this board to sign that agreement when it's finalized.
Thank you, and I know this really took a lot of extra work from the county attorney's office and quickly done. And I want to thank you for, you know, your, you know, just expediency in getting this done in such a quick manner. Also, of course, Michelle, you and your staff are making sure this is done.
I am so grateful and grateful from my community, grateful from our HHS staff. I just want to say a sincere thank you to our county manager's office, our finance department, the county attorney's office, and most especially our board of supervisors. Thank you from the bottom of all our hearts.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank the staff for their work. Thank you.
All right, members of the board, next item is a public hearing item. This is the quick public hearing item. So we will go, we'll take a break after this, but let's go ahead and get through item number nine. This is a public hearing consideration and possible action to recommend approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding new application number 357481 for a Series 004 wholesaler liquor license for the Spritzee Time located at 2670 Andrew Douglas, Plague Staff, Arizona, Agent Richard Shawn Longergrain. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to our Clerk of the Board, Lindsay Daly, to proceed.
Thank you Chair Horseman. And I just want to note, Mr. Longergrain is on, he, Mr. Longergrain, you can just unmute once we get to the end of this so you can speak if there's any questions for him. This is unique, we never really see a wholesaler liquor license application, so it definitely perked me up to find out more about it. And I reached out to Mr. Longergrain because the address on the application is his own residence. So he was advised by the state that this is the process he needs to follow, is to do a wholesaler liquor license application. He does not intend to sell alcohol out of his house or produce alcohol in his house. So I just wanted to note that. And we did, once we received the application, missed out, reached out to Mr. Longergrain. And there's a little bit more of a description in the staff report that explains how the state kind of helped guide him through this on the proper way to do it. We reached out to various departments, as you know, our Sheriff's Department, Community Development, Health Department, and Risk Manager. None of them have concerns regarding the application. And our great Sheriff's Office went out and did the posting at his house just to make it known that this was a liquor license application because it's the address that's on the application. And we did not receive any comments or concerns regarding it. The board, of course, makes a recommendation to the state regarding the application, but does not issue the license. And I just want to read this little section here that the applicant was told by Risa Williams with the Arizona Department of Liquor that he needed to apply for a Series 4 license, which again is a wholesaler license. He's not going to warehouse any product, but this is the path the state let him know he needs to take. He's having product produced in California and then sent to distributors in Arizona, which he will be determining soon. Again, this is the location, 2670 Andrew Douglas is his residence that's on the application. And it will be his administrative office for the business. And Mr. Longergrain is again on, if you have any questions for him, he's right up there on the screen.
Yes, hi, thank you for joining us this evening. If there's anything you'd like to add to what our clerk has provided, please.
Well, first of all, thank you, and Lindsay, can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Okay, you laid it out absolutely perfect. I hate following something like WIC because that was very heavy and this seems very light. But what Lindsay was saying is, this is basically a virtual office. It's, you can see my office right now. It's only wherever I am, whether I'm here or traveling, I just had to have a physical address on file with the state of Arizona.
All right, and this is, I'm just, for clarification, it was duly posted in accordance with the statute and that during, there was a 20-day comment period, and during that time, you have received no comments, is that correct?
That is correct, Chair Horseman.
All right, with that, members of the board, any questions before I open this for a public hearing? With that, I am going to go ahead, open this public hearing, and we are going to, at this time, turn this over to Lindsay Daly and have her explain how we're proceeding with the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, if there is anyone here that would like to provide comment during this public hearing item for this liquor license application, you can make your way on up to the podium, and we will provide three minutes on the clock for you to speak. We just ask that you state your name for our minutes. If you're watching on the YouTube stream, you can email your comment to boardcomments@coconinoaz.gov, and we will read that comment for you. I'll go check the inbox.
Members of the public, this is your time to be heard on this public hearing for this
Chair Horseman, we do not have any comments in the inbox regarding this item, and it looks like there's no one here that has indicated they would like to speak.
All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I believe this is in District 3, is that correct?
That is correct.
District 3, you get a lot of these. And any comments you would like to make at this time?
No, there aren't. I have no concerns, and so I would make a motion that we make a recommendation to the Arizona Liquor License and Control to approve this license.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of recommending approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding this new application for a wholesale liquor license for Spritzee Time, please indicate by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and good luck to you and your business.
All right, thank you, thank you Lindsay for laying that out.
All right, members of the board, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we're going to come back to talk about our public hearing and possible action with regards to zoning matters in the Valley area. All right, five minutes. So here we are, we're back. And I want to thank you, and for those that are here for the next item, I know some of you have traveled afar to be here for the board meeting today. And I want to let, extend my great appreciation. We need to hear from you, and I think that it's important for all of us to be involved in our communities and the future of our communities. So it's really nice to see so many people here for this next item. And I'll tell you what it is for members who are not here. We are on item number 10. Public hearing consideration and possible action of ordinance 2025-07 and Resolution 2025-61, proving a zone change from G, which is general 10-acre minimum parcel size, to zone to RC Resort Commercial Zone on an 82.25-acre parcel with approval of a master development plan and a zoning change from the G-zone to the MHP, which is manufactured home park zone on a 40.04-acre parcel with 152-lot subdivision preliminary plat in Vale, Arizona, in Valley, Vale, can't read it, Valley, Arizona. The property is located 0.7 miles north of the intersection of State Highway 64 and US Highway 180. It is further identified as parcel number 50334-005A and 503-34-01010 respectively. The applicant is Aaron Heis, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Hi, what is it? Heisey, thank you sir, of Civil Design and Engineering. Plague Staff and the property owner is Live the Dream Development LLC in Gilbert. Members of the board, we have had a lot of information presented to us, and I am looking forward to a discussion on this and turning this over to Community Development Deputy Director Jess McNeely, who will start the presentation on this. Good evening Jess, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Supervisors, appreciate your introduction there. Chair Horseman, we'll go to our next slide. If we can make it go to the next slide. I want to advance. It's not me. This one is showing the stop share, do you want me to stop sharing on this one?
So while they're dealing with the computers, I think we have two matters before us, two zone changes. One is resort commercial, and one is for that manufacturing, manufactured home subdivision. So just as we go forward, I'm assuming you will break that down for us.
Correct, yes, thank you Chair Horseman, and thank you for the introduction. And next, do I need to ask you to go to the next slide? Thanks, thanks Lindsay, appreciate it. Okay, we're going to old school. So and Madam Chair, you have already gone over all the items on this slide, who our applicants are, and they are here with us, and what the request is, zone change from the G general zone to RC with a master planned resort commercial and manufactured home. That's two different zones for the entire property. And of course, a subdivision preliminary plat for the, for 151-acre, excuse me, 151-lot. And of course, a subdivision preliminary plat for the, for 151-acre, excuse me, 151-lot subdivision. The two parcels together total 122 acres and you described the location in Valley, .7 miles north of the Highway 64-180 intersection. And of course, that distance is key because the Valley Area Plan calls for commercial development to be within one mile, as this is, of the 64-180 intersection. This slide shows our general location. This is the Valley area as, as identified on the screen and you see our subject property highlighted. I apologize, being that Lindsay is driving, I won't be able to point to things, that's okay. Hey, thanks for pointing to the, to the subject property there, Lindsay. We'll point out that with this, with the map you're seeing in front of you, of course, we have an aerial photograph overlaid with it. You see that the, the subject property is vacant. It is that .7 miles north of the 180-64 intersection that you can see on the image in front of you. You can see the Valley Airport shows up really well within the aerial photograph there to the, to the south-southwest. The blue squares you through, you see throughout the image there are all state trust land. All the rest of this has been parcellized in some way. And then, of course, the one big subdivision that you see in this image is the Grand Canyon subdivision that was started in 1969 and that subdivision created thousands, actually, I believe 8,000 to be exact, one-acre lots. Of course, the county has learned a lot since that subdivision was approved for the Grand Canyon subdivision and where we didn't have systems in place to require roads to be built to a county standard or maintained or have plans for water, wastewater, other necessary utilities or even a fire district. Those things weren't required in the Grand Canyon subdivision, all those lots you see out there, which, which is part of the reason why many of those, the vast majority of those lots are still vacant. We've now improved our systems and have a better subdivision ordinance in place to make sure we get the things we want and need as a community out of development. So, on to the next slide. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here, still with an aerial photograph to help with understanding. But now with the zoning colors on, planners, of course, we all, we all nerd out and assume that everyone understands what these colors mean, but, but we can explain it real quick. You see the subject property, the two parcels, the 82-acre parcel labeled subject property that, that fronts right onto 64 and then just to the north-north-east of that is the 40-acre property that is proposed for a manufactured home workforce housing subdivision. And then with all of the colors turned on here, you see the, what we consider the, and what the Valley Area Plan considers the commercial core of the Valley area. You see where 64 and 180 intersect and immediately surrounding that intersection is all the red. That is commercial, general commercial zoning. And much of that zoning is developed with some of the businesses that you'd recognize if you, when you drive through that intersection. Little south of the red is some gray, that is industrial zoning. And we do have some industrial development within the industrial area. So we do have a mix of zoning in the area. Out to the east, you see all the yellow AR, that is residential zoned, AR agricultural, residential. Those are one-acre lots. As you get closer to the intersection in this image, there are some of those that are developed or higher numbers of them. But again, it's, it's all of those thousands of one-acre lots that have been very slow to develop as, as they lack maintained roads. The roads are not built at all in some instances and they lack infrastructure. When you go to the west side of 64, you can see the airport, even better in this image, down to that lower left-hand corner, you see where the airport has a manufactured home subdivision that's actually built out. So that is a similar development to what is being proposed on a portion of the site today. Immediately south of our subject property, you see MHP zoning. And that property came to you for a zone change a couple of years ago and was approved for a subdivision or for a development similar to what's proposed for the workforce housing portion of the zone change in front of you this evening. Immediately south of that, labeled as Water Tank, is a, essentially a commercial utility, commercial water site. So there's large commercial wells, producing wells on that property. There's large tanks, there's proposed expansion of that property and there's even some ponds dug on that property where that property is one of the main water suppliers in the area. Much of this area has haul water where, and, and water that is trucked to different commercial businesses and homes alike. And much of it comes, much of that, the majority of that would come from the wells on this site.
Jess, I have a question, because I don't want you to leave that slide. Between the subject property and the Water Tank, the manufactured home property that we approved, I believe that approval included with it, land to be set aside for the future for a fire station, is that correct?
Absolutely, thank you for, for pointing that out. And, and we could talk more about that. So the MHP property, yeah, immediately south of the subject property, a part of their approval, a part of their master plan that they're subject to includes a reserved site for a future fire station. So that has been thought through, Fire and Emergency Services and the lack of a fire district in the area and the lack of a fire station in this area has certainly been thought about before, this isn't the first time. When we look at the other commercial developments, we see the Clear Sky Campground to the, to the south-southeast of the subject property. That's the big white domes, if you've been in the area and noticed them, that was one of our early campground projects in the county, following some updates to our zoning ordinance in 2019 that put parameters in place for commercial campgrounds. And then over to the, to the west-southwest, the Under Canvas Campground that sits on the airport's PC planned community commercial zoning. The Under Canvas Campground had to come to you a couple of times for zone changes to be able to develop and to be able to expand a, a commercial campground. And of course, Bedrock City, just right at the corner there, we're all familiar with, with the Flintstones theme that goes with Bedrock City and that's been there for many, many decades. As a matter of fact, it's actually grandfathered for zoning. So that kind of shows with some of the labels there, how this commercial core of Valley does have a lot of the commercial lodging in the area, of course, you know, the draw of the, the nearby southern of the Grand Canyon is, is why there's, and the highways running right through here has really naturally made this a commercial core and, and the Valley Area Plan really lays that out. Next slide.
Even though they tried to name a Grand Canyon junction and we haven't been able to get it approved, right?
Yes, correct, correct. It held on to the traditional Valle, V-A-L-L-E, name. So this is the master development plan that was submitted by the applicant. And of course, I encourage you to, to give them some detailed questions if you have any. You can see that it sits right on Highway 64, has a connection right kind of in the center of, of where all those circles are, where it would get an ADOT approved. 64 is, of course, managed by Arizona Department of Transportation, so ADOT has to approve all of the safety infrastructure, turn lanes and whatnot that would go on with that, that connection, that access point for the development. The blue circles you see in, in this image in the lower left-hand corner, the larger blue circles through the center are all the communal facilities for the resort commercial development. And then the bigger circles that go around with all the little squares, little cubes sitting within there, those are all the commercial lodging units. Also on the commercial site would be some of the necessary infrastructure, including, including water and wastewater systems. In the upper right-hand corner is the manufactured home subdivision. This is the workforce housing component and you see it's laid out on, on roads. Those would be maintained roads as part of the development and there are some parks, several parks within the development. So it's really laid out to be a subdivision neighborhood for workforce living in the area. In the lower right-hand corner of this image, you see the blue lines that connect further to the south, to the development, down to actually High Grove Road. I know you can't read that label from this distance, but this demonstrates where there is secondary access into the entire development. That's just better for traffic flow, it also gives access for safety and emergency services vehicles as required by our subdivision ordinance. We require, once you go over 30 lots, to have more than one way in and out of the development. Any questions on this slide, Madam Chair, Supervisors?
And what is the red just right above the blue?
That would be yet another access, another access route into the, to the north from the commercial development, from the main commercial entry into the manufactured home park subdivision. So when we look at the details on that master plan that you were just looking at for the, for the commercial lodging portion, the resort commercial master plan includes 150 detached commercial lodging units. Those were those little squares laid out in the circular fashion. It also includes restaurants, spa and studios for yoga and art, other communal facilities for that, for that resort development. Then on the 151-lot manufactured home workforce housing subdivision, those lots are all 7,000 square feet each. Those lots would have some options in this development, some would be for sale to people who would want to purchase them and, and live on them, and then some would be for lease. This zoning, manufactured home zoning allows for manufactured homes and allows for park model RVs, those tiny houses that we're all familiar with, we see in several different developments throughout our county. So there is some diversity of what kind of housing types could be developed on this property. And actually, those are not uncommon housing types, they're very common housing types in, in the Valley area in general. The workforce housing subdivision does include over three acres, 3.4 acres of open space and common areas. And the subdivision would include CCNRs, almost every subdivision that has an HOA would have CCNRs, their covenants and restrictions that, among many things, would help fund maintenance of their common areas, maintenance of their roads. And in this case, volunteer, voluntary from the applicant, from the developer, is that these CCNRs would prohibit short-term rental in the workforce housing. So when we go back to the, to the master plan, all of the commercial development stays commercial, that's the commercial lodging. The workforce housing could only be used as housing, which has been a real issue in our community when we see our housing stock get consumed with short-term rentals. So that was a, a very good solution from the applicant to voluntarily have CCNRs that prohibit short-term rentals. When we look at the infrastructure and services for this entire development, of course, the access from Highway 64 requires a, an ADOT-approved TIA and encroachment permit, that's how we get safe turn lanes as approved by, by ADOT. And as we saw on that image, there are two other points of access. Those are from private easements on maintained roads. The infrastructure and services include maintained roads within the development. This is a big deal in that the Valley area lacks community, lacks housing areas with maintained roads. There would be community-level well and water system. So this is a piped water system, not a haul water system. Again, a big deal for workforce housing in that that is currently lacking in the Valley area. There would be community-level wastewater system. So the wastewater system would not be individual onsite septic systems, as is common throughout the Valley area, but rather this would be a community-level wastewater system, much more sustainable in the long run and the ability to use the wastewater out of that wastewater system for watering landscaping in the area. Again, a more sustainable option than what's currently available in the general area. And considering services, there is the proposal to create a fire district in this area. We already looked at the site on the property immediately south of this site, it has been reserved for a future fire station. If and when a fire district is created, all contiguous properties could join and there are a lot of commercial properties in this immediate area that are currently subscribed for their Fire and Emergency Services. The county zoning ordinance does require for developments such as this, that they have a Fire and Emergency Services provider. And the applicant has met this requirement, it's actually met through proposed subscription with High Country Fire. And High Country Fire, of course, has presence in the area and has subscription service with many properties in the area and to include most of the commercial properties as the county zoning ordinance requires that those commercial properties have, have a, have a Fire and Emergency Services provider. And there's a lack of a district in the area. So this is a step in the right direction of getting a district in this area.
Jess, I want to just stop you for a minute. Maintain roads within the development, a community water system permitted by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, community wastewater system permitted by ADEQ and of course, fire district. But looking at the top three, are there any other developments within the Valley area that has these, the maintained roads, a community water system? It looks like they're going to have at least one, possibly two very deep wells down into the Redwell Mauv Aquifer, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and also just a community wastewater system. Is there any other development within Valley that's doing this?
No, no other, no, Madam Chair, no other developments within Valley have those amenities.
Thank you.
So we have a couple images here. This is, this one is the commercial area. So this is immediately east of 64 and looking further east, this is what the natural native vegetation in the area looks like. And then move a little further north-north-east, this is standing on the manufactured home park workforce housing subdivision site. You see that we do have some nice junipers in the area and the development, if you read through their narrative, fully intends to retain as much as possible of the native vegetation. And then what they add, of course, would be consistent and drought tolerant with the native vegetation. So in working with the applicant on this property, we talked a lot about what does this look like from Highway 64? The comprehensive plan, our county comprehensive plan identifies Highway 64, particularly at this location, as an important gateway location, heavily traveled particularly by, by visitors to our area who are on their way to the southern of the Grand Canyon. So if you look at the top image here on this slide, that is what you would see. You drove up Highway 64 right now and looked off to the east, that is what the site looks like now. And then if you go to the bottom image, immediately below it, that would be the change. And in this, the applicant is demonstrating that their development, the design of their development blends very well with the natural setting and is a, is a good gateway visual amenity to this area. Buildings you're seeing there, particularly the ones that, that stand up a little bit taller, upwards of about two stories, are all some form of earthen building, either adobe or rammed earth. And some of the buildings that you see off to the sides of that, to the right and left of those central features are actually a rusted corten steel, a dark steel that actually blends in quite well with the, with the native vegetation. So the applicant really worked with us to give a good visual of what the site looks like now and then what it would look like afterwards, so the, so the community can understand that. And this is what the development would look like from a kind of a bird's eye view from the east, looking out over it and just from an elevated visual point, looking towards the west. So in the center of this image, you see those earthen communal buildings that blend in well with the landscape and then laid out in the circular fashion, the cubes you see around that would be all of the commercial lodging units that surround the communal features. Next slide. And this is a close-up of the central entry tower that you would see from Highway 64. It's about two stories tall and this would be an adobe earthen structure. So it really does blend in well with the native landscape and you can see the other rammed earth buildings behind it that would be part of the, of the resort. And this is a commercial lodging unit image provided by the applicant. So these would be a factory-built building, all detached, small cabin style, but these are built to a commercial code and these would be the commercial lodging units. They come with some outdoor space. This is pretty common, we're seeing more in our area, in our county, commercial lodging projects that are wanting to go with smaller detached units where honestly, where people can sit outside at night and enjoy our dark skies. We saw a very, a similar development type up in Marble Canyon and we see similar type of developments in several of the Glamping commercial projects we've seen in our county. This is an image of the engineered subdivision preliminary plat. And this is the preliminary landscape plan for the, for the commercial portion of the development. Again, they intend to retain native development. Again, they intend to retain native landscaping as much as possible, and then what they add would be drought tolerant. I believe they would be using their own wastewater system to provide some of the reclaimed water for their drought tolerant landscaping. And this is the preliminary landscape plan for the workforce housing manufactured home subdivision. And you can see within that subdivision where the green spaces, the small parks are, that would be for the people who live in this subdivision. So the applicant submitted a citizen participation plan. They held their required neighborhood meeting. It was back in February. All property owners within 2,000 feet were invited. They had 12 attend. There were some concerns that were brought up at the time of this meeting, including overall number of units, and the applicant reduced the total number of units from what they had proposed prior to this meeting. Concern of the need for fire and road maintenance district, and the applicant has responded with plans for each that actually meet our county requirements, and concern for water adequacy. And of course, the applicant has a plan for their own community level water system. We do have one letter of support from the, actually, only a budding property owner immediately to the north, actually, a property owner that would have the commercial portion to the south of them and the workforce housing residential portion to the east of them. That property owner is very supportive and provided a letter of support. We do point out that water adequacy, when it comes to the groundwater, is not a finding that can be used for zone changes and subdivision approvals, and that the final plat is required by state statute and by the county subdivision ordinance to provide a statement of water adequacy. In this case, what we anticipate is that that subdivision will describe, the, yeah, the subdivision final plat will describe what the community water system is and how that will be provided to the individual lots within this subdivision. There are some additional concerns that we've heard since the neighborhood meeting was held and since the citizen participation plan was submitted. We forwarded those concerns to you. We've heard more recently some concerns, first off, with who the applicant is. We certainly would like to point out from staff in this hearing that who the applicant is is not a finding for a zone change. Zoning runs with the land. That's per the county zoning ordinance and state statute. So who the applicant is is certainly not something to be considered in making the findings to approve a zone change. There have been some concerns brought up about fire fire service adequacy. We will point out that what the applicant has submitted, they do have a fire and emergency services provider. It's been identified as High Country Fire, who also provides service to many developments in this area. That that provision of fire and emergency services, in fact, meets the county's zoning ordinance requirement to have a fire and emergency services provider. There was concern brought up about light pollution. We will point out that the county does have a dark sky ordinance, and this this development will be required to get lighting permits, outdoor lighting permits, as all developments are required to. So light pollution is certainly not a concern in our county, based on our ordinances. And there was some concern brought up about assurances of this development. There are assurances included in the recommended conditions. This development would be required to develop in accordance with the approved master plan, so there wouldn't be changes to the uses. For instance, it would only be the land uses that are in the in the plan. And if you look at the conditions of the subdivision preliminary plat resolution, the applicant has 18 months to go to final plat. They, in that time, they have to either build their infrastructure, all of the infrastructure required for the development, or more commonly, what we see is that they would bond for the infrastructure to move forward on their final plat. So there is a built-in timeline, 18 months, for the applicant to go to final plat. Any questions, Madam Chair, or any supervisors, before we move on?
Any questions? I can't see if Supervisor Fowler or Vasquez, any questions?
Can't see them. Okay.
Good. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. So when we look at the county's plans that would apply to this request, we have the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan. Of course, we're in the process of updating that comprehensive plan. But the P&amp;Z Commission was able to make the finding that this request is consistent with our comprehensive plan. It is an appropriate design at a gateway location. It would provide affordable and workforce housing at a needed location for workforce housing. There would be adequate levels of services for maintained roads, water and wastewater, fire and emergency services, and this would be tourist-related development that focuses on conserving and showcasing our county's unique natural, cultural, and dark sky features. Now, there is a valley area plan that is in place. It just so happens that this property sits within kind of an island of some other surrounding properties as well that are not a part of the valley area plan. When you look at the valley area plan map, this this site is not within the valley area plan. However, the applicant did voluntarily do their development to ensure it conformed with the valley area plan. And the ways it conforms with the valley area plan, many ways, but the real highlights are that this is commercial development or includes commercial development within one mile of the 64-180 intersection, and in fact, is contiguous with other commercial development. So there's not a land use compatibility issue there. This development provides for needed community water, wastewater, power, road maintenance, and fire and emergency services. Those are all services that are currently lacking for other developments in valley. This development would use reclaimed water for their native and drought tolerant landscaping. And this development provides a lacking mix of housing for residents and employees. So those are all things that the valley area plan identified that this development is consistent with. And Chair Horstman, supervisors, on the screen, here are the three findings required to be made in order to approve a zone change. The Planning and Zoning Commission was able to unanimously make those findings, as described on this slide and in your packet. And on the next slide, these are the five findings required by our subdivision ordinance in order to approve a subdivision preliminary plat. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission were able to unanimously make these findings as well. So really, in summary of staff's and then the Planning and Zoning Commission's analysis, when we look at all the findings required for both a zone change and subdivision preliminary plat approval, this development does bring to the valley area things that are currently lacking, and that includes workforce housing, workforce housing that is that is, you know, on lots that have systems for water, wastewater, and maintained roads. It brings fire and emergency services to this development and and one step closer to having a needed district and additional services in this area. We've described it brings community water and wastewater services, and this is an area where, for safety purposes and just for better quality of life, we would have maintained roads. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission does forward a unanimous recommendation of approval for both the zone change and the subdivision preliminary plat. Those can be accomplished through approval of Ordinance 2025-07 and Resolution 2025-61 in your packets. I know we have the applicant here who would like to give you a presentation as well and answer your questions, but staff would be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions first from staff? Doesn't appear so, so we'd love to hear from the applicant.
Thank you all. It's a, it's an honor to to be here. It's been a long time coming, and I'm sure you all have had a long night, so thank you for making the time. My name is Ryan Scott. I'm the developer of McLean Meadows. Jess did a terrific job, as he always does, so I don't want to repeat anything that Jess did, but do want to, you know, take maybe 10 to 15 minutes for me and my team to highlight a couple points, and then we're happy to take questions. So I'll share a little bit about myself, our point of view about why this development makes sense for for valley. My partner, Arcana, will talk a bit about the experience and the vision for the project. My business partner, Alex, is here to talk a bit about the financing, and then the team from CD&E who are terrific will talk through some of the more engineering points and can take questions. Ryan Scott, I'm, you know, husband and father of twins. I've been here once before. I did have the parcel to the south approved for the development that had the fire station and the rest of the development there, so thank you for that. I've done other projects in and around Kachina and own other land and projects in in the valley area. I have a home in Kachina, and so I've been here for a long time rather than some kind of outside outside developer. So why why McLean Meadows? Jess hit basically everything, but but just to simmer things up, we really tried to take a collaborative approach. When we started, we had an understanding of what was probably important here, but over, you know, the course of 18 months, met with the community, Chief Trotter, Thad and Miranda. My neighbor, as I said, to the north, spoke with many times. He couldn't be here, but did send the letter. My neighbor to the south, we spoke with as well, so tried to make sure that we had heard from those constituents. We've had both a community meeting, but also, you know, attended the CCA meeting as well. And we'll talk about it in a second, tried to not just listen, but really incorporate those. There's plenty of good to go around in this project, and as Jess mentioned, things like the CCNRs for short-term rentals, happy to accommodate things we didn't even think about, right? It's also a comprehensive solution. You know, there's benefits for the community of this project, but I do see that you don't have to give up things to get those benefits. We're adhering to the valley plan, the county plan, inputs from the community. It's not just hospitality, it's workforce housing as well. Took a little bit about the infrastructure. So it really is an attempt to be end-to-end, not just serve us, but serve the community. And there's also a team here. There were some questions about will this project get done, who's involved? There's myself, CD&E's committed, but also this the design firm, who's partner in the firm or in the opportunity, Arcana, and financing have all been with me, you know, for the last year, putting this piece together. And why now? I mean, I know there's alternatives to simply wait on a project. I think the benefit now is that the county gets more than just a hospitality project. As Jess mentioned, the infrastructure that's being brought here, sure, there could be other projects like mine, maybe just hospitality, just housing, but by combining them together at this scale, with a group that we think is is quite amenable to what the county wants, you know, it's really one plus one plus three equals three. There's a lot more that's coming out of it than just simply a workforce housing or a hospitality project. And that's what represents, I think, a rare opportunity for the county to to partner with someone who's willing to deliver all of that, not just necessarily what we're interested in doing. There's been a lot of discussion about hospitality and workforce housing. Is that even important? Is our project actually going to meet those needs? I felt like it did, but we wanted to make sure. And so we worked with the two state agencies, the the Office of Tourism on the hospitality, and Akona on the workforce housing, to share, not just in general, but our project with them, get their point of view on the specifics of our project, meeting the demands that they see. And as you can see, they specifically cited that yes. For example, the price points for the lots, obviously, there's lots of lots. There's no shortage of lots. The point is that these lots, you know, at the proposed maybe 50,000, there's no comparable for that. Anywhere near the Grand Canyon or valley or down to Williams, right? So I think that fits a very, very unique need for the for the county. I am also excited to partner with Habitat for Humanity. It was an idea that was recommended to me. We met with them. You may hear from them as well. So we have several of the lots in the workforce housing community that are donated to Habitat for Humanity. They'll be putting up homes that are like this. They've got a great program to allow them to service folks who could be working on this development as it's being built. And then as they're working, you know, at the hospitality, they could be living there through their programs. We're starting with two. It's quite flexible. If you want to do more, the group seems quite quite good. As I mentioned, Jess pointed out a lot of the high points. I said we listened to the to the community. Just a couple of pieces. Very appreciate Chief Trotter being here. It's good to partner with him again, like we did on the previous development. We're donating 180,000 to the High Country Fire Station. We really sat with him to understand what was important. Ian could talk a bit about the fire hydrants that are there far more, I think, than was was initially intended, which is terrific. Hospitality project-wise, I don't think it was in the narrative, but the intention absolutely is to bring EV chargers there as well. That came up in discussion, which is a terrific idea. You'll you'll hear about the sustainable wellness focus of the Arcana vision. I won't steal their thunder, but this isn't just a hotel or even just a resort. It's quite well aligned with the ethos up here in Flagstaff and the greater county. On the workforce housing side, I did mention kind of the price point. It's $50,000 with a fully improved lot. There's obviously lots of lots that are far less than that, but when you think about adding all of those services, it becomes quite difficult, if it's possible, to to have a lot that you can build on at that price point. You know, the density, as Jess mentioned, we did adjust a bit based on on feedback from the community. This is the density that really supports getting enough housing in there, having it pencil out with the significant infrastructure that's in there. I did speak with, even as as soon as today, Thad and Miranda on some other ideas, there was a comment about, you know, could this become an RV park? That's not really the vision for the area, but the zoning would allow that. I fully agree. There's not an intention to allow just traditional RVs, and we could look at even putting that in the in the CCRs if we need to. It is allowed by the zoning, but certainly not the intention for for workforce housing. So with that, I can take some questions. If not all, welcome Jeremy, the executive for Arcana, who's been partnered with us.
Well, and I understand that you've been talking to some of the folks in in valley on concern on the RVs, and you are amenable to putting that in. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's not the intention. I actually didn't realize that it would be allowed, and yeah, there's there's no issue with that.
Thank you.
I'm glad it came up.
And I can tell you, I also appreciate personally the the short-term rental in the CCNRs. That that has been a big concern for us here in the county. Any other comments, questions?
Okay, so Jeremy, I think it's a, it was a holiday in Canada, so they couldn't make it here. Are you on the line with us, Jeremy? Okay, I'll text him and I'll get him back. That's fine. Maybe just introduce Alex Aginski, who's a colleague of mine.
Just no, I do have somebody that just says iPhone, so it could be him, and I can just say, allow to speak when we get. I'm not sure it's who you're looking for, but there is someone on that just says iPhone.
That's fine. Jeremy.
Jeremy, if you want to unmute and let us know if it's you. I have allowed you to speak. If you're on the iPhone, you just need to unmute. You can hit star nine, and that might help you unmute.
Go ahead, Alex, we'll work it out. We were all good at this during COVID.
Okay, hello, everybody. Great to meet you guys. I'm so glad to be here and honored to be able to talk about this project. I'm very excited about it. Ryan and I have been talking about it for quite some time. It's really an incredible opportunity for us, I think for the community as well. So I want to give you a little bit of my background, just so that you have a better understanding of who I am and why I'm involved in this project, what excites me about it. So I wear many different hats. I'm a developer, I'm an investor, I'm an entrepreneur, I have a number of different businesses, and I've been in real estate for over 20 years, all aspects of real estate, whether it's development. I've developed a number of hotels and other hospitality projects. I've done, we've managed a number of assets all over the country, property management, asset management, so very, very familiar with hospitality in general and real estate in general. I've known Ryan for a number of years. In fact, I met Ryan actually through his dad originally, that I have a lot of respect for, and we became fast friends, and we've started talking about a number of different projects along these lines, and we've been talking about specifically a tiny home development for a number of, probably what, two years now, something like that. We've looked at a number of different opportunities, but nothing really spoke to me the way that this project did, for a whole host of different reasons. And when we started talking about this particular project, it just made sense on every front. Both the fact that there is a hospitality aspect as well as the workforce housing aspect, I think lends credibility to the project, provides a lot of synergies for both communities. I think that the fact that there is really nothing of this size and scale in the community really will bode well for the community and will create a lot of value for the community long-term. And in fact, that's one of our criteria for any projects that we look at, is to really identify opportunities that create long-term value. We're not just looking to get in and get out. We're looking at projects that create long-term sustainable value. That's very, very important for us. So I'm excited about the fact that we can create a project that really encompasses multiple facets. There's infrastructure piece, of course. There is the housing, there is a hospitality piece. There is really, to some extent, there's going to be some entertainment value there as well, right? Be that in the spa, or the restaurant, or the pool, or the whatever else is planned for the community as well. So there is a lot of synergistic pieces there that really go hand-in-hand and really lend value to the project. So as I mentioned, our experience has been in all facets of commercial real estate, including development, including management, consulting even, and we've invested into a number of other similar projects. So I'm very familiar with the process, I'm familiar with what it takes to make a project successful, and I believe that this particular project has all of the elements that you need for a successful project. We, my firm in particular, will bring all of the expertise necessary, not just capital. We're bringing much more than that. We're bringing the hospitality expertise, we're bringing the dollars, we're bringing a lot of other aspects to this that would be valuable in this project in terms of kind of the long-term opportunity here. So bottom line is, we don't really look at any deals that don't create value for the community, for the residents, for the, you know, for the, really, the area at large. And this project really meets all of these different criteria. I think with that, maybe I can pass on the mic back to Ryan.
Putting his own money in as well. Did we get... Jeremy?
Jeremy, if you'd like to just unmute.
All right, we'll give you one more try later, Jeremy.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, my name is Ian Braun. I'm the engineer of record for McLean Meadows. My address is 618 East Route 66, Flagstaff, Arizona 86001. I'm here to just answer any civil infrastructure questions you might have about the project. I don't think I have to rehash ADOT turn lanes or permitting with ADOT. I'm very happy to do so if you're interested. As far as water and wastewater, Mr. Neely already went over this. The original plan, and this is still a viable option, would be to drill two wells, put in 400,000 gallons of water storage, and put in a community wastewater treatment system that's capable of treating to a reclaimed standard for reclaimed reuse. A very exciting development that I do want to talk about that has happened since the P&amp;Z hearing is a prominent business owner and the main water supplier in the area has reached out to me, offering up a partnership, possible partnership, to invest capital into their water infrastructure, their wastewater infrastructure, to put in more of a community water wastewater system, extending a water main, a sewer main, and a reclaimed main to our property, and with the potential of serving other properties in the area. I think this is super exciting for a lot of different reasons, but I think it's really a step in the right direction when we talk about the lack of water and wastewater infrastructure in the Valley area, and that this could kind of be a catalyst to start that. I did want to clarify one thing, there is another development in Valley with a community water and wastewater system. It's the Valley Air Park. I had the opportunity to tour their facilities, very nice, the development's very nice. It's a different product than what we're proposing, though, just because we're proposing a mobile home park subdivision, which is different than a mobile home park where you would rent a space and you would rent a space in perpetuity, whereas what we're proposing, the mobile home park subdivision, gives people the opportunity to buy a parcel of land, to own that land, you know, and to really build personal wealth based on that. So if you have any additional questions about water or wastewater infrastructure, how we're planning to do that, or any other infrastructure, just very happy to answer those questions for you. As it was discussed, so we'll have a dedicated 180,000 gallons of water storage specifically for firefighting. So that's 1,500 gallons per minute for two hours. That's the requirement for a commercial development like this one. The map here that you're seeing is essentially the hydrant placement that would have a 500-foot service radius that would encompass the entire development. So it would, as I understand it, the only development in Valley that would have this kind of a fire suppression system. I don't know if, before I... So to speak about, you know, the capacity for firefighting, we really thought it would be best if Chief Trotter spoke to that. I don't know if you want to try and get Jeremy in one more time before we hand it over to Excellent, thank you, Chief Trotter.
Thanks for being with us tonight, Chief Trotter.
No problem, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm here to answer any questions you have for fire suppression from High Country Fire to provide to McLean Meadows. The big question is, is time response. There are some questions from some of the people in the county, I think, that had some questions about, are there any regulations on time response or capabilities? There are no state, Arizona state or county regulations for fire departments, volunteer fire departments. The only guidelines, and their only guidelines are from the NFPA. I believe it's 1710 talks about response times for municipalities, but for rural fire departments, it's under 1720, is I believe, and there are no guidelines as far as for rural volunteer fire departments. We can take 10, 15, 20, 30, 40 minutes, depending on where the fire is, to respond. Through the fact that it's rural, people live far, far away from our fire station. As you all know, we're a 501(c)(3), we're not a government entity, so we bring our revenue in from membership contracts and billing and donations. But as far as any guidelines, the only thing that FPA, going back to that, is we should be able to put water on a fire within two minutes of arrival, which we do all the time. There's been a lot of talk about fire districts, and Madam Chair and all the supervisors here know that I've been up here three or four times talking about fire districts, forming fire districts. I've even gone down to the Capitol in Arizona and proposed a new bill, which has gotten squashed, but I'm still hacking away at it. I'm going to find a way to overcome our absentee property owners that outnumber the residents 50 to 1. I will have a plan, hopefully, by the first of this year for you. I'm working on it diligently with my staff, and we hopefully might be able to conquer it. But with that, High Country Fire has capabilities of responding into Valley. Everybody who does a conditional use permit contract with us or a membership for residential, it's in the contracts that... We're a volunteer fire department. It's going to take us some time to get up to the Valley or wherever, Howard Mesa, Four Hills, South Rim Ranch, and we're a volunteer fire department. I could have 20 volunteers show up, or I could have six. Again, in that letter I sent to you, we had six volunteers on a structure fire in Junipine last Friday. A municipality fire department would have had 24, 26 firefighters. We did it in six. We saved the structure, we contained it to a fully engulfed bedroom with six firefighters, one engine and one tender. We took breaks after we knocked down the fire, but we did everything that a regular, real fire department would do. So with that, I think I've answered most of the questions. We have the capability of handling. I've got two stations right now, one in Junipine, one in High Country, or one off of Highway 64. I have six engines. I just purchased, my battalion chief's down in Sierra Vista Fry Fire Department, just purchased a used 2002 tender pumper down there. It's his old fire department. It's in excellent condition. They're just retiring it and selling it to a cheap price due to the fact that it doesn't qualify to go out on state and federal fires. Any apparatus over 20 years old, they can't go out on these wildland fires, so that's the only reason why they're getting rid of it and replacing it, but it's in excellent condition. It's only got like 12,000 miles on it. Everything works great, so we'll have three tenders. We'll be able to transport with that tender over almost 17,000 gallons of water. And the only place that will have fire hydrants will be the McLean Meadows. There are fire hydrants at the air park, but somebody has to go over to the pump station and throw the switch, but these will be always charged. I think I covered everything, but you have any questions?
I have some questions. And, you know, Chief, we certainly have relied on you before to provide services for many of the developments in this area. I think what's unique about this one, and I think part of the concerns that we received from the municipality down the street, if you will, closest to Valley, is that this is such a large development. We're talking about 300 units potentially when it's built out, and so that's, I think, just the size of this project. So, you know, I think what you're saying to us as a board is that even given the size of the project with everything, and I think they've really provided a lot of extensive information, you know, will you be able to provide the requisite fire and emergency response to this development?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things I didn't cover is our FRAT program. That's our Flagstaff retention and training program. Every year, I go up to the Coconado Community College to the hazmat class, Fire 1 and 2, and the EMT class, and try and recruit, as I call them, the kids, the FRATs, to come down, volunteer at High Country Fire. We give them stipends for gas, because most of them live in Flagstaff, and recruit these kids and have them sign a contract. We help them with some of their costs for tuition at the college, but we train them on how to be firefighters. Our last group, we had nine FRATs. We lost eight of them. One went to Flagstaff, got hired by Flagstaff Fire after his three-year contract with us. We lost two down in Prescott. We lost two additionally to the National Park Service. One got a part-time job at the hospital and discovered that he wanted to be an FNP, so he's going to NAU to fulfill that. So our program works. I'm recruiting right now. We've got four additional volunteers that come in. Again, with volunteerism, it's up and down, it's like a roller coaster. But we have the staff and the equipment to provide fire protection for this area. Like I explained to...
And a, sorry, and a project as big as this.
Big as this, yes. I have contracts with Howard Mesa, Four Hills, South Rim Ranch communities. As I explained to them, in a perfect storm, I don't care if I have 30 fire engines and 300 firefighters. In a perfect storm, in a rural area, there's nothing we're going to be able to do. Palisades in California, the fire up in Kellogg, Idaho a few months ago, things like that. I don't care how many firefighters, airdropping tankers you have, in a perfect storm, the fire is going to travel and take and consume everything. But knock on wood, we've been able to, in the last 20 years that we've been a fire department, we haven't dropped a call, not have anybody respond, and we've been able to handle and suppress fires and EMS.
So right next to where this development is being proposed, there is space set aside for a fire station.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you, has there been discussions about building a station and staffing a station there?
At that particular property, yes. Also, I'm working with Miranda, and forgive me, Miranda, I forgot your last name, Baldowski. All right, I'm working with Miranda and the CCA to come up with a project of building a fire station on their property and with a community center. If we are ever able to establish a fire district from, obviously, the Red Lake, including the Valley area, we're working, Miranda's working on that, trying to get community togetherness so that we can get people, because it boils down to, for a fire district, I have to have the support and the signatures from the property owners in the community.
Would this project, if this project goes through, would it make it easier for you to get the numbers and signatures you need to form a fire district?
Oh, yes. And Miranda's helped too. She has her finger on the pulse of the community in Valley. Yeah.
Any other questions of Chief Trotter? Supervisor Antiveris.
No, I was thinking the same thing about this could be the beginning of a fire district, and then you just have to have adjacent properties that would stretch throughout the area, but this could be the beginning of one.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I'm trying to work out some final details. As I stated in our previous meetings before in front of the board, that we might have to have a weird-shaped, fingered fire district and put it back on the community for them to sign in, kind of an op-in, op-out... for them to sign in, kind of an op-in, op-out type thing. So if, for example, if I had property and it was five properties from the district, I would have to get my neighbors to sign in also and convince them to be part of the fire district and to pay taxes.
Peer pressure.
Peer pressure, yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Chair, we do-
Excuse me, it sounds like Supervisor Vasquez. Was that, was that a hand up?
It was, it was. Um, I just wanted to go back to the, what really caught my attention was the $180,000 donation to the fire department, and I was just curious if that could be expanded on and what that was used for and if, uh, how that's going to help get this fire district as, as such. Just get a little more clarification, explanation. Thank you.
Okay. The donation is basically their contract for fire protection, and it's not all upfront at once. It's over a period of, of years. Um, it's going to help us with some of our equipment and hopefully to help us get some of those FRATs to maybe be able to entice more volunteers on a stipend base, pay base, to get more people into the station, um, and available for calls. My issue as a volunteer fire department to kind of expand on that Supervisor Vasquez is I have volunteer, well, our gene pool obviously, or volunteerism is limited to the rural living. My issue is during the day, when most of my volunteers work 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday, um, on the weekends and the evenings, I have a lot of volunteers show up. It's during the day, uh, is the issue. It's, it's basically what I, what we call the dinosaur squad. It's all of my retired firefighters that have put in 20, 25 years that can't give up fighting fires. They come in and volunteer during the day. That's my dinosaur squad. I'm part of it. Um, as you know, I'm retired police officer for 20 years, a nurse, and then been doing this as the fire chief for the last 20 years. So, um, I'm getting a little old, but, um, hopefully I can find somebody to replace me someday. But anyway, does that answer your question?
It does.
Yes, it's going to go toward equipment, apparatus?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to kind of expand and talk a little bit about your program, what you do and, and how that's going to help and how important it is to have that funding over a long period of time to sustain what you would take on should you take on this project, so.
Yes. It's primarily to get an additional apparatus, quicker response times up to the Valley area and to be able to respond on some of the sketchy roads that are off the highway. Um, that's the whole idea of, of part of the $180,000. And again, 501(c)(3), anything we get is mandated by law, um, to go back into the fire department.
Any other comments, questions? All right, we can proceed. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair, we do have Jeremy. Um, he can't get into our Zoom because he's out of the country, but we've, I think we found a way for him to speak, so we're going to put him on the speaker.
Hey, can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? Okay, can everyone hear me?
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm going to try to tell you about Arcana, and if you're having trouble hearing me, I apologize in advance. Uh, Arcana was created as a way to help people return to the wild, and when I say the wild, it's not necessarily wild as a destination, but also the wild within you, and it allows you to really connect with nature and use nature as a tool to help guide you towards finding your true version of yourself. And, you know, since, since a kid, I was able to grow up near nature and that allowed me to spend time to reflect, be more curious, um, and give pause to be present, and that was the foundation basis around creating Arcana. Uh, we, we want Arcana to be built in areas that have very strong natural beauty, and we believe the Valley area is well-suited for the Arcana experience because of its location next to the Grand Canyon, uh, where get and explore and be one of nature's, uh, or the world, one of the world's greatest natural, um, area sites. And, uh, so we're very pleased with, with the property and, uh, to work with Ryan and Alex and the team here on this property and look forward to bringing the Arcana experience to life here in Valley, Arizona.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, Jeremy. I'll just point out, I mean, you can see one of the homes there. You can almost not see it, so I didn't want somebody to miss it, but that's, you know, part of the, um, appeal. So, you know, we went a little bit long. Thanks a lot for that. Just close, I mean, there was some discussion about WIC in the beginning and a comment around tourism, um, that was, you know, uh, an intense story and something that's happening around the county. It's good to hear, though, the need for tourism and that we could meet some of that need in a couple of years here. So, um, lots been said. I'll just close there. Thank you very much for the time we're here. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for all the information and for all of you that came to speak, and, and we're glad we even, we even took away your Canadian member who took away from their holiday, so thanks for appearing. All right, let's move forward. Uh, any questions or comments, members of the board? We've heard obviously from our staff. We've also heard from the applicant, and unless there are some questions the board may have at this time, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. Yes, Supervisor Auntie Veras?
Um, thank you, Chair Horstman. It's not a question, but it's a comment because there had been some talk about, um, potentially having RVs being in there. The, this, if approved, this has to be with, as the site plan lays out, and there are not any RV spots in there, so I think that that is, is a non-issue. I just wanted to put that out there right now for the, the people that are here.
And if there's a question, we can always just put it in there, no RVs, but it sounds like that's not a problem, so. All right, very good. Uh, any other comments, questions? Otherwise, we are now going to open this for the public hearing. I know there are some folks that are here. Thank you for traveling far to be here and waiting so long, um, to present. Um, and I am, at this time, it's open, I'm going to turn this to our clerk to explain to the speakers, um, how they can address, uh, this public meeting and this public hearing. So, um, take it away, if you will. Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. At this time, if there is anyone that would like to provide comment regarding public hearing, item number 10, we do have comment cards by the table. I do have some that are already filled out of people that would like to speak. Um, and also, if you are watching on the YouTube stream, you can send your comment to boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov, and I'm just going to let you know, we will provide three minutes on the clock, um, for you to speak. It'll go from green and then it just cuts to red when your three minutes is up, so just be aware of that. And if you could just state your name for our minutes, we would also appreciate that. The first comment card I have is from Thad Johnson, if you'd like to come on up.
Thank you very much. Chair Horstman, members of the board, uh, thank you very much for giving me the time. Uh, my name is Thad Johnson. I have lived in the Valley region for over 20 years designing resource-efficient off-grid homes. My own home is off-grid and has been on the sustainable building tour, uh, multiple times in the last decade. There are many things about the resort that I like. Um, I want to make that clear upfront. If I had more time, I'd, I'd explore those a little bit more, but I think, uh, that's really come out in the presentations that have been done so far and everybody talking. So I'm going to focus on the, the two things that I think I have that don't feel right to me about this. Two aspects of the development that I don't feel good about, uh, begin with is 151 residences in a 40-acre parcel. I think that, uh, the amount of noise that's going to come out of the homes being that close together and the amount of light, uh, that is going to come out of the homes, and I know that we have dark skies, I know that they're committed to, uh, paying attention to the dark skies, is that with that many homes close together, even if all of the outside lights, including any streetlights, are downported, you're going to have glow from interior lights. So there's going to be a massive homes that are going to be a glow of interior lights and furnaces on or air conditioners on, so there's just going to be a lot of noise up there that the residents in Valley today are just not used to. So I personally, uh, living off-grid, obviously I have a completely different experience, but I, I respectfully request that the workforce housing community lots be a minimum of one acre to reduce the potential dark sky impact and the noise and the potential dust of that many residents driving in and out of such a compressed area. So moving on, with one minute to go, um, I'll talk about RVs. I'd like to get clarity on the last question because I, I think that because it's zoned the way it's zoned, uh, RVs could be there, but I don't know that for sure, and I do appreciate that, uh, the team has voluntarily, uh, said that they could support no RVs, but living in a full, living in a RV full-time is not comfortable, healthy, or sustainable. I know because I lived in one for about a year while I was building my home. They're designed for temporary living, not permanent residency. The average RV has single-pane windows, minimal floor and wall and roof insulation, and in order to keep an RV reasonably comfortable in the winter and keep its pipes from freezing, a heater needs to run close to full-time with all the windows closed. This requires an excessive amount of energy. Mold resulting from no ventilation, high humidity, and warm air inside is a common problem for RVs in the winter in our climate. And I'm out of time, so I'll leave it there, but I would like to see, um, I would like to see mold, well, I'm out of time.
I have a question, however. Um, 5,000 square foot lots, that's, that is a typical lot size in a, um, like city of Flagstaff, correct?
Probably, yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, and of course, that's part of the problem we have here too for affordable housing, is we need the density in order for it to pencil out, if you will, and I don't know if that's something that you've thought about or have thoughts on, but, you know, that is a problem we in Flagstaff, for example, are, are dealing with as well.
If I may answer that, thank you for the question. Uh, yes, I have thought about that, and I realize that realistically it does not pencil out, but the Valley community is not the same as an urban environment, and the residents in the Valley community don't want Valley to be an urban environment. So I get it that it doesn't pencil out dollars and cents, but I think there's more going on, especially in Valley, than just the dollars and cents.
Well, and the infrastructure is also something Valley doesn't have, you know, roads, maintained roads, a wastewater system, uh, wa, um, wells, et cetera. So it, it is, quite frankly, this development is more of, is different for Valley. Uh, it, it is a, a, a development and, um, high-density development. It probably will be one of the, well, there's, I guess, the, um, airport park, but other than that, there really isn't much, other than, as you say, wide-open spa, spaces in a lot more than one acre. I mean, it's 10 acres, it's 20 acres, it's 40 acres, and, and this is obviously very different than what development that's hous, housing development that, that's occurred there.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions, then we'll move forward. Thank you for being here. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next we have Miranda Baldowski. I'll reset the clock for three minutes.
Thanks, Miranda, for being here.
Working on my public speaking skills. Well, hello, Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Miranda Baldowski. I am a Valley resident. I was raised in Valley. I got to grow up going to Williams, going to Flagstaff for college, so very well-versed in the community, and I am grateful to, for the opportunity to stand here before you today to reflect on the crucial importance of intentional and sustainable planning for our Valley community. As we consider the reason, it, it becomes clear that updating our Valley area plan is not just a formality, it is a fundamental necessity. We must think about the resilience of our community from the elements, fire, water, air, rain, snow, and anything else that will be thrown at us, such as a unknown economy. To the spirit of we, the people, we have the opportunity to set an example for what it means to build a strong, adaptable community that thrives in harmony with nature. In discussions I've had about the project, I've heard many perspectives, some in support, others with concerns. A key issue that continues to arise is water consumption and high-density develop, development, such as this manufactured park zone with 7,000 square feet parcels, and how these decisions shape the character of our community. While high-density housing may appear to address affordability on the surface, it often, often treats the symptoms rather than the root causes. True affordability to me means creating a community with the infrastructure, services, and natural balance to sustain a long-term quality of life. Without the infrastructure in place to sustain it, this kind of growth becomes difficult to nourish, leaving our community stretched rather than strengthened. That's why updating our area plan is so important. The plan we have from 1999 laid a solid foundation, and it's time to evolve. We need to include new data, new community input, and a shared vision that integrates modern sustainability practices while preserving our rural integrity. This process must be guided by collaboration, transparency, and community engagement, because lasting change only happens when every voice is heard. In conclusion, this project presents an opportunity, not just for development, but for reflection and realignment. Let us, in, or let us use this moment to reaffirm our commitment to building a valley that is resilient, intentional, and rooted in harmony with the land and one another. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miranda, and I agree that area plan needs to be updated, and I promise I'm going to do everything I can after we get our comp plan, that Valley will be number one on the list to get that area planned.
I'm just here to be the squeaky wheel.
Thank you, squeaky. All right.
Next, yes, next we have Eric Wolverton. If you want to come up, we'll set the clock for three minutes.
Good evening, Chair, Supervisors, County Staff and Manager. Great to see everybody. Um, I just wanted to step up. Uh, I am the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona, and I was thrilled to hear that Live and Dream Development reached out to us before they reached out to you in planning and zoning to see how they can incorporate affordable workforce housing within their development. So I want to make clear that we all know that we have a major housing issue, and it's not just in the city of Flagstaff. I can't even build homes in Tucson. What's great about this development is that it provides an opportunity for Habitat to build affordable workforce housing and permanent affordable workforce housing in the Valley area, because for the first time, we'll have public improvements in place to be able to support those homes. Without having that, we are looking at probably about $60,000 to $100,000 of investment per lot. We're looking at, uh, we're looking at, uh, we're looking at, uh, we're looking at, uh, lot just for sewer or septic and water. Now, being able to have lots that are more affordable for the workforce is fantastic, but to have a developer that's willing to incorporate some of those lands by donating them to Habitat, allowing us to build homes for their most impoverished families in that area, and that it would be permanent affordable housing, to last for generations to serve and use. And quickly, I just want to mention what our Starter Home Program does to change people's lives. Let's just talk the simple numbers. Once Habitat builds the homes, and again, the cost is a burden to Habitat, we sell those homes at $100,000 per, $1,000 down payment, and you're a homeowner in Valley. With mortgages under $1,000 a month, and 833 of those dollars going to your equity savings, that turns into $10,000 in savings annually. To give you an idea of the success of this program already, we built two pilot homes on O'Leary and Butler here in Flagstaff, and the first resident to buy that home will successfully hit his three-year mark at New Year's, saving $30,000 in equity. When we found him, he was homeless. So this is a way that we can move working families out of poverty, closer to the middle class. And the best part is, is that now they have the ability to sell their home, deed-restricted, back to Habitat, get their equity savings, and use that non-restricted money for their own needs and purposes moving on into the future. We are transforming what affordable workforce housing looks like. And the best part is, it's a nontaxable solution. It's about working with partners, the county, the developer, and the nonprofit, and then making the solution for the end user, and those are families in Coconino County. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question real quick. Sorry. Thanks, Eric, for being here, too.
Eric for opening up the door.
Oh, there goes the time limit. Just real quick, so similar to what you've done at Timber Skies, what you'd be looking at here, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think that speaks a lot to Habitat, because it shows the scalability of our organization. We went from two pilot homes to now working on 40 homes in Timber Sky, and we're looking at getting that done within a two-year period.
And how many homes would you be looking at if this development goes through?
That's still a conversation with the developer, and so it really comes down to how many lots that they want to allow for us. But to give you an idea, I would have to say, though not like a lot of the other lots in Valley, even at 7,000 square feet, those are very large lots in comparison to what you were saying in Flagstaff. So for us, we would, depending on the ability to build densely, 7,000 square feet, I could put four homes.
I think it's 5,000 square feet, though. Seven?
Seven.
I was wrong. Thank you for correcting.
So again, this gives just a great opportunity for us to be able to, like, you know, a private developer. Our goal is to build more units. That's what's going to bring down the cost of housing. We're the instrument to be able to make that happen.
Thank you, Eric. Really appreciate it, and thank you for being here tonight.
My pleasure.
Any further?
Gail Jackson.
Hello, Gail.
I really feel good to stand up. You guys want to stand up with me a little bit? Good evening, Chair Horseman, County Supervisors and Staff. My name is Gail Jackson. I'm the President and CEO of Ikona. We do regional economic development in the region. And I'm here tonight to support the McLean Meadows Arcana Resort subdivision and zone change application. This project represents thoughtful and balanced development, something we desperately need here in Northern Arizona. It provides a dual benefit for workforce housing, for local residents and employers, and a high-quality hospitality experience that supports our tourism economy without compromising the rural character that Valley currently has. First and foremost, workforce housing is one of Ikona's top priorities. The housing affordability gap for the entire region is over 15,000 units, which represents over 40, almost 40%, 39.1% of total households. McLean Meadows will create 151 utility-served residential lots with flexible home ownership options and rental options. So a model that's going to support our teachers, our first responders, and those that work up at the Grand Canyon and other places that are currently struggling to find housing. This is the first Valley area development to offer water, sewer, and power at this scale, and it's going to be a game-changer for the residents and employers in our region. Second, the Arcana Resort. It introduces a health and wellness-focused visitor experience that's both economically and environmentally responsible. The resort's 150 low-impact cabins have the native landscaping that we treasure here in this area, as well as fully-shielded lighting that aligns with our dark skies and our fire wise standards. It also opens up amenities like the restaurant and the spa to the public, not just serving our visitors, but our residents as well. This project aligns with the comprehensive plan and the Valley area plan, reducing residential density by more than a third, which that was adjusted after community feedback. We don't always get that from developers. They're also committing to a form of an improvement district for roads, utilities, and ensuring fire protection through the High Country Fire and Rescue. These kinds of proactive commitments make development sustainable and community-minded. Finally, this project represents the kind of investment we need to see more of in this region, one that builds infrastructure, enhances safety, and preserves open space and delivers economic vitality to all of Valley while honoring the unique landscape and the charm that it has. So please approve this zone change and subdivision application for McLean Meadows Arcana Resort. It's a responsible step towards workforce housing, jobs, and a stronger regional economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate your comments. And anyone else?
Chair Horseman, we do have two comments in our inbox that I'll go ahead and read.
Please.
First is Ansem Baskoma. After hearing the presentation, I only have the following two rephrased questions and retract my previous three questions. Thank you. One, what provisions are in place to ensure the land zoning reverts to its original classification if, A, the current developer is unable to execute the proposed plan? B, the land is sold to a new developer who fails to construct the project as approved? And number two, what concrete measures and enforcement mechanisms will the county mandate for this development, more specifically in the residential area, to actively preserve Valley's dark skies? The community is concerned, especially given that past large-scale windmill projects approved by the county have detrimentally impacted the area's natural beauty and the night sky quality. How will the county ensure a different, more protective outcome this time? Thank you. Best, Ansem. And then a second comment I have is from Katrina Drawbeck. I'm a resident of Valley and am writing with questions and concerns about the McLean Meadows development being proposed. While I do support affordable housing as it is needed, we want to make sure the area retains its natural beauty and does not get crowded with developments that do not fit into the community. I'm especially concerned about retaining our dark sky community. What, if anything, will be done to preserve this important aspect of the community in regard to this development? Furthermore, I'm concerned about what will happen if the developer sells the land before the development is completed? Will there be safeguards in place for this? What will happen to the zoning if this happens? Thank you, Katrina. Okay, and that gets us through our comment cards. If there's anyone here that did not fill out a comment card but does want to speak on this public hearing, item number 10, you can now make your way up to the podium, and we will provide you three minutes. And it looks like Chair Horseman, there is no one else that would like to comment.
All right, and just for the record, I'll also indicate that we have received letters on the proposal, and these will also be considered part of the record. The board members have all reviewed them and do have copies of them, and will be considered in our decision-making here today. If there are no further, this is the last call. If there are no further comments at this time, I will close the public, the public hearing at this time. Ask our board members if you have some questions. I do have a couple of questions I would like to ask Jess, if he is still here or if he So thanks, Jess, and I know it's getting late, so I'll try to make this quick. We did get, and some of the complaints on the project that were provided to us had to do with the, you know, we've talked about one-acre zoning versus, in this case, 7,000 square feet, which is a typical, or possibly slightly larger than a standard lot size that you might see here, for example, in the city of Flag. And I know this is something that you are recommending, something that planning and zoning is recommending. Why is it that you are recommending higher density for this type of project?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first off, this is what the applicant has submitted to us. Of course, we met with the applicant several times in helping them develop their submittals to be in conformance with the county's codes and plans. It's their submittal. Staff and ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission support it, because in order to do workforce housing in an affordable scale, the only way you're going to be able to have a maintained road network and community-level water, wastewater, and fire service is to go with smaller lots, so that you get the economies of scale of smaller lots. Certainly understand the concern. This is different than most of the Valley area. However, we see this as a compromise and actually called for in the Valley area plan, which asks for a mix of housing. And we know we have to have that mix in order to get a mix of housing types and affordability. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
It does. And then the other, and this is one of our, and I can't remember the person's name, a concern about whether, if the developer decides to sell rather than build, they want the parcel zone to revert back to the current zoning. I don't know if that's at all legal to do something like that, because of course, zoning runs with the land. But I'd like your comments on that, and are there some protections if the developer, for example, decides to sell rather than go forward with this project?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. You are correct in that zoning runs with the land. It's not legal under the county's zoning ordinance or under state statute to tie a zone change decision to a particular property owner. So this zone change, the resort commercial zone with a master plan, is required to be developed as approved, in accordance with the master plan that we looked at and the applicant's narrative. Any changes would require coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board essentially for a zone change. That's for the zoning portion. With the subdivision, what is being requested and recommended for approval is a subdivision preliminary plat. That has to be followed up with a final plat. And our subdivision ordinance, and it's written into the conditions of the resolution that's proposed to approve the subdivision preliminary plat, that final plat has to come within 18 months, or an extension can be requested. But that does give a timeline in there for the applicant to either build the infrastructure or bond for the infrastructure for the subdivision. So those are the assurances that come out of our, that come out of our codes and out of our basic practice. If a property owner, whoever it is, does not want to develop under the approved master plan, they would be back in here. So it will sit undeveloped until, in the case particularly of the commercial development, until a development comes forward that conforms to the master plan. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
It does, and I have one more. And I know we have also received some letters just talking about, you know, just concerns about the size of the project and the ability for High Country to be able to meet the potential fire and emergency response. And we've heard from Chief Trotter that he's looked at this, understands the plan, and feels that they have the expertise, the equipment, and the staffing to be able to do that. And I take that, and he's presented to us before, and we have taken his comments very seriously and his expertise to provide that statement. But I have a question, only because, maybe because of my background, but are there anywhere separate standards for counties to look at to determine fire or emergency response capabilities or adequacy?
To answer your question, Madam Chair, no, there are not, there are not any regulations or requirements that would give metrics, per se, for fire and emergency services. We do have in our zoning ordinance that a development such as this has to have a fire and emergency services provider, and High Country is able to provide that, meet that requirement.
My questions. Any other questions, members of the Board? Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jess, there was, there were questions that were brought up about water concern. I wonder if you are, maybe this is the county attorney, can we take consideration as Board of Supervisors into water concerns about a development?
So thank you, Supervisor Fowler. The short answer is no, that water adequacy, groundwater adequacy, is not a finding for a zone change and cannot be taken in consideration in making findings for a zone change in our county.
We're trying very hard to get the legislation to change that, Supervisor Fowler, but it's not there yet. Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, and maybe I missed it during the presentation, so I thought of it as we were listening to some of the comments from the community about the density of the workforce housing. Is that workforce housing only for the staff that work at that area, or is that going to be open outside beyond the workforce of just that resort or that space?
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Vasquez. By the narrative of the master plan and what we've received from the applicants is some of those lots will be used for housing for that development, for the development that's a part of this, or the commercial development that's a part of this master plan. And the lots will be available just for sale to local people in the area, and there would be options to rent also from this development. And what we know is an issue in the general area is a lack of workforce housing for other commercial operators as well. So from reading the narrative, there would be opportunity for other businesses that need workforce housing in the area to purchase some of these lots in order to provide workforce housing for their workers. So it would be a mix.
Okay, thank you. And then my follow-up question to that would be, would any, would these houses would not be allowed to have short-term rentals, correct?
Correct, Supervisor Vasquez. Yeah, the applicant's voluntary narrative identifies that short-term rentals would be prohibited in their CCNRs.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Fowler.
My internet froze, so I want to, I just want to make sure that my question was answered regarding the water.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler, I thought I saw your camera freeze. So we have our attorneys here as well, but if they wanted to chime in. But the findings for a zone change or subdivision preliminary plat approval cannot include groundwater adequacy.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, members of the Board, we have two different matters before us and two different One has to do with the zone change from general 10-acre minimum to resort commercial. One has to do with the zone change from general 10-acre minimum to resort commercial. And the other is the resolution approving a preliminary plat for the subdivision for the manufactured home zoning. So, we do have findings we need to make for both. So, at this time, I would take comments and findings from members of the Board before I take a motion. Supervisor Ontiveras.
Okay, thank you Chair Horseman. I would just like to state for the record that I have read the staff report, which contains a recap of the planning and zoning hearing where there was unanimous approval. I've read the applicant's materials. I further, I also met with Mr. McNeely to further familiarize myself with this proposed development. I have considered the presentations this evening as well as the public comments. And I also want to note that this developer did not have to comply with the Valley Area Plan, but chose to do so anyway. I have reviewed staff's analysis and the planning and zoning analysis on the findings required to approve the zone change and the subdivision preliminary plat. I agree with the Commission's findings, and I also agree with the conditions for both the zone change and the subdivision preliminary plat. I can make the findings for both the zone change and the subdivision preliminary plat. This is a big and bold project, which I appreciate. This project will meet an important need for affordable/workforce housing, the infrastructure, and also the partnership with humanity, excuse me, Habitat for Humanity. I have felt that this development could be the first domino to fall to coordinate services such as water and wastewater to serve the community at large, as well as potentially being the beginning of a fire district. Let me try and read my notes here. Actually, the going on that point, I will just point out that when the applicant stated that he had talked with a neighboring property regarding the water and wastewater, that is an example that I'm talking about as far as the first domino to fall to serve the community at large. I do not have a problem adding a condition prohibiting RVs as a permanent residence if that would give the community members some peace as to doing this. And I also understand the concerns of the community members. I have heard what has been said here tonight regarding the noise, the light. These are growing pains. This is what happens, and it's difficult to sit up here as a board member. But our decisions are very, have to be guided very carefully, and that's what I have done, and that's why I was very specific when I stated that I could make the findings as required by law to approve this. So, I just want you to know, though, that I did hear your concerns. And I do want to just emphasize that we cannot consider water in our decision-making process. So, with that, I'm going to leave my comments there, and I am interested in hearing the analysis of my fellow supervisors, but at this point, I can make the findings to move forward with this, to approve these requests that are in front of us this evening.
Thank you Supervisor Ontiveras. I will also say that I can find the findings also for both the zone change for the G to manufacture home park zone and also from G to the resort commercial zone. And I find the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission appropriate, and I agree with them. I would like to make a couple of other comments similar to what you did. I also totally understand those that have lived in the valley area, the need to have resilient, sustainable community, have a strong, adaptable community. And quite frankly, I think this development does exactly that. I think it's important to have mixed housing. I think it's great to be able to have a home on five acres or 10 acres or one acre. But again, if you're going to want to have a strong, sustainable, adaptable community, you need to have mixed housing. And I believe that what the plan that's being presented here with 7,000 square feet, which is a typical lot size, is what you need to pencil out the infrastructure that we would like to see in these developments in Valley and everywhere. And that is wastewater system, wells, roads. These are things we don't see often in the area of Valley. And I don't believe that that will interfere with those that want to live a very much off-the-grid lifestyle, which Valley does offer and that Valley does support. So, I think it's a mixed housing situation. I do not feel that it in any way prohibits those that want to experience the most rural parts of what Valley has to offer. I think it's still there. I'm very happy to see the partnership with Habitat. I'd like to see more of our developments do that. As a matter of fact, I think that shows, again, the need to build a strong, adaptable community. I also appreciate that they voluntarily have agreed in their CCNRs to not allow short-term rentals. Housing is needed in this area for Grand Canyon, for the Forest Service, for many of the, what's the businesses and just what's going on up in that area. And I think this offers that. And so, I do appreciate that workforce development, housing is needed, and I believe that this offers that. So, myself, I can also make the findings for the zone change, that it's consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, supports a well-designed community, affordable and workforce housing. There are adequate level of services, including roads, water and wastewater, fire protection, and utilities, and tourist-related development. The zone change is consistent with zoning ordinance provisions, RC and MHP subdivision zoning. Number two, that the change is in the interest and will further the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. It does provide for a well-designed community, does provide for needed housing, does provide for tourist-related development, and I do find it does help public health and safety. Really appreciate your talking to the water company near you to look at the possibility of opening up the water from those wells and also your wastewater system to others in the area. I applaud you, and I hope that will go forward. I think that's a really good thing and is really necessary. Number three, that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood nor be detrimental to the adjacent properties. Again, I think it's important to have mixed housing, I think, given where it is and given the fact there's a lot of commercial in this area. I do not think it's going to interfere with the rural neighborhood and rural feel and the off-the-grid feel of much of Valley. And I also have really applauded the work, and I'm going to just say this, that Miranda, you've done and your committee has done to try to create a community, to get your own zip code, get your own post office, to get your own community center, to get your own fire station. And I think this kind of development is going to be helpful in accomplishing all of that. And I appreciate the comments, Gail, that you have made, because I think they're very similar. This is the kind of development that we need there, kind of checks all the boxes for me. My main concern, quite frankly, was fire and emergency response, and we have High Country that's made it very clear that they can handle it, and also that they are working with the developers on getting that fire station there or possibly where the community center is. I don't care where it is, but it really, a fire station there would be very, very, very beneficial. And I know that would certainly help and would hopefully take some of the pressure off the Tucson Fire District right down the street. And, you know, I know everybody's there to help each other, but we also want to make sure that we have adequate fire and emergency response. So, I applaud the efforts to get a fire district there. I applaud the efforts to get a fire station there and hopefully work together to make sure that this, in fact, happens. And I'm going to do my part to work with the Valley community in getting that area plan. I promise you that. So, I think the next is, and I won't get into the manufactured home park and the resolution and the findings necessary. I find that the requirements of that, in fact, have been met here, and I would just incorporate the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission for adding to my record on why I find both zoning changes are allowable under Arizona law and under our policies here in Coconial County. Any other comments, questions, members of the Board?
Here, I'll go.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. This is a very unique development. When listening to the presentation, something that really stuck out to me was the fact that there are 8,000 lots out there that are undeveloped because there was poor long-term planning. I see this development being part of a long-term plan. It fits with the comprehensive plan. It'll be guiding through the comprehensive plan. So, I agree that it meets the requirements for both zoning changes. Coming in, I had concerns about fire service. I feel that based on the long-term donation to the fire department and the development of a fire district, I think those concerns will be taken care of. I think that the other concerns that I've heard were been about dark skies. I feel like we do enough with our dark sky ordinances that should be mitigated and shouldn't be detrimental to the community character. And then also with the density with the workforce housing is, you know, in order to make affordable workforce housing, we have to make it pencil in. And so, I feel that this is, this project does enough to meet those requirements and to provide infrastructure that's much needed out in that area and will help the neighborhood beyond just that development. So, with that, I'm in support with, of both zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Any other comments, questions, members of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you. I too am in support of this project and the zone change that is being proposed. I actually like the project that it is, I am impressed with the partnership that has been created with the Habitat for Humanity and also even just the fire department and really laying out a thoughtful project. I wish we would get more projects like this. We talk about the concerns about workforce housing and just housing in general. It's such a great challenge, and this project really has added to that, and I'm really happy about that. I know that there's concern about water. We all know that we cannot, it's not within our authority, and that's the reason why I asked that question, just so everyone knows that where our authority lies and that, and we don't have authority really to take action on the water. But the fire department is there and then possibly have another fire station built. I think that's really, really good. Workforce housing is so important, and that was addressed, fire is always a concern, and that was also addressed. They, just, I asked about, you know, we're always concerned about the environment. I want to thank Jess for meeting with each of us, who really answered a lot of our questions and really hearing from the community and the concerns and the support. That's only add into what we already know. All the materials that have been submitted, we read all of them and read the Planning and Zoning Committee's decisions and the reasoning, and then also the additional materials that we have received. And then really want to thank everyone for coming out and expressing their concerns and their support for this project. You know, the environment is always our concern as well. I asked about, even though it was close to development, wildlife corridors, you know, migrating corridors, and there isn't any. But, you know, the environment is always a concern. And then the road too, you know, how is it going to be, how is it going to be maintained? Does it meet the standard? What about A.D.O.s close to the, close to A.D.O. highway? How that turnoff is up to standard, all, you know, we ask, I ask all those questions. And with that, all the questions and the answers that I received, I'm very much in support of this project. I think that is a project that is going to be very good for the community. I know there's concerns, but also dark sky. Dark sky is, we have a dark sky ordinance for the community. That means lighting, how lighting will be, how lighting within the community, and even right down to the light bulb when it comes to dark sky. We look at all of that, and the staff will continue to work with the developers on this. So, anyway, I just wanted to explain just my reasoning why I support this. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank everyone for coming out again.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Breguet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to just let you all know that I am supportive of this project here, only because I feel that it, both the zonings that we are talking about meet the requirements of the zone change and developments and whatever that needs to happen in the area. But I just want to say that I know there are worse concerns, the residents being too close to one another, that it might be too noisy, all these other concerns that we heard about. But nonetheless, I think the plan itself has outweighed, you know, what is going to really benefit the community. And also, I just want to say thank you for all the presenters here. It's a good plan, I think, you know, just like my colleagues are saying. We, I think, you know, we really need to support plans that are beneficial to the, most of our constituents out there. Affordable housing is something that we're really looking for. And we, and as it was said, you know, the more affordable housing we have, you know, then maybe some of our prices on our houses would go, rental would go down, you know, things like that. So, I just want to say that I think the partnership was very well put together and, you know, everyone was working together, and I think the only concern that I had was the fire, the fire stations, and that's being addressed at this time. And so, I think altogether, all in all, I do support my other colleagues, you know, and I agree with- and I agree with them and the comments that they have made regarding this project. So I just want to say thank you so much.
All right, and if there are any more comments or questions at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt or deny Ordinance 2025-07 and Resolution 2025-61 approving a zone change from G, general 10-acre parcel-sized zone to the resort commercial zone on the 82.25-acre parcel with approval of a master development plan and a zone change from the G-zone to the manufactured home park zone on a 40.4-acre parcel with 152-lot subdivision preliminary plat in Valley. Property is located as more fully set forth in the agenda and in the documents presented. Do I have a motion to adopt or deny?
Chair Horseman, I think we have to do this in two separate motions. So do we?
I think it would make it cleaner if you do it in two separate motions, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2025-07. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Well, I just did.
I think it's already.
You can do it again, why not?
That's the zone change.
I think it's in the record already, and the ordinance that you're citing states all the information that you need.
So I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-07. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. I will then entertain a motion for the second ordinance and second zone change. And that would be, do I have such a motion?
Chair, I think the ordinance covers both zone changes, and the resolution is just for the preliminary plat, so you can move on to the resolution.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-01, which is approving a preliminary plat.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, members of the board, we have done our hearing. And again, I want to thank everybody who traveled quite a ways, quite frankly, to be here, Valley and Tucson and Canada. And really appreciate everybody. So thank you so much, and our staff. You've done an excellent job on getting this together for us, so appreciate all of you as well. Now, we're going to, I'm going to ask for that items 11 through 14 are at this time just tabled. It's getting too darn late. And I'm going to ask that we move forward to item number 15, and that was a discussion and possible action to remove a board member of the local workforce development board. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to receive legal advice from counsel. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Sorry. I know. I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor of going into executive session for advice from legal counsel, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are going to go into executive session. We will be leaving this to go up into our executive session room, and we will be back after our executive session. And why don't we take about a five-minute break before we get to executive session? So thank you, and we'll be back. We are back from executive session. We have an item before us, members of the board, and that's the discussion and action to remove Bruce Sobchak as a member of the local workforce development board. We are out of executive session at this time. Members of the board, if there are any comments, like to hear them. Otherwise, I would accept a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Chair. I move to remove Bruce Sobchak as a member of the local workforce development board effective immediately as the board member has not met his responsibilities to the board and its membership under the shared governance agreement, Section 1B6 and Article 2, Section 2F1 of the Coquigny County Workforce Development Board bylaws.
I have a motion before us. Do I have a second? I have a motion before us. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. I'll make sure. Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Then it is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, members of the board. It's been a very long night. Therefore, we stand adjourned.
Good night, everyone.